All right, we're gonna get started. Everybody hear me okay? Thanks for joining us for the City of Oklahoma City's teleconference city council meeting. We have a few announcements to make regarding the teleconference meeting. If the teleconference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the auto connection is restored. Communications are unable to be restored within thirty minutes. Items remaining for consideration will be continued till later today, March 2nd at one o'clock via teleconference, unless we have the opportunity to stay at a different time. The agenda and documents are located on OKC.gov. Anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item, public hearing, or to speak under citizens to be heard, please call 405-297-2391, or text 405-219-7927, or email cityclerk@OKC.gov. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to comment. After the three, after three minutes, the speaker's microphone will be muted. A thirty second reminder will be provided prior to the microphone being muted. All participants, except the council members, please keep your phones on mute until you are recognized to speak. Please press star six to speak. Council will be allowed to ask questions or comment at any time during the meeting. Okay, we're gonna start with our invocation, and we have Pastor Chad Higgins from Summit Church. Pastor Higgins, are you on the line?
Yes, good morning.
All right, please proceed when you are ready.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. God, I thank you for this beautiful and wonderful city that we have the pleasure to live in. I pray for each and every person on this call. I also pray for those that are watching and listening. I pray for their families, I pray for peace, pray for comfort, I pray for strength in this time. God, I pray that you give these council men and women great wisdom, great discernment. God, may you teach us as a community to love one another as you've loved us. May we care for our neighbor, may we help the hurting. God, I pray for those that are sick right now, I pray for their families. I pray for those that have lost loved ones over this last year. May you give them peace, may you give them comfort. We thank you for this day, we thank you for what you're doing in our community. And I pray blessing over all of these people and all of the people in our community. We love you and we're thankful for today, in your holy name I pray, amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor, appreciate you joining us this morning. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order, and we have item three, Office of the Mayor. We'll begin with item three A, an economic development update from Roy Williams, President of the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce. Roy, I saw you on there, so feel free to begin when you're ready.
Thank you, can you hear me okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Wonderful, well, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to share some remarks this morning. But first, I want to congratulate councilors Nikki Nice and Todd Stone on securing another four-year term serving our citizens on the council. I want you both to know how much I appreciate your commitment to our community, and I recognize the gift of your time and energy to making our city a better place to live and work, so thank you. The top of our agenda right now continues to be helping Oklahoma City businesses face the challenges that have been brought on by the pandemic. We've been working very closely with the city staff, with the Alliance, with the county and others to help businesses be aware and gain access to the various loan and grant funds available to support their continued operation. And we truly appreciate the partnership we developed with Alliance and the city to offer the Oklahoma City Small Business Continuity Program. Not only were we able to help our local businesses, but I think the process also really shined a spotlight on some of the challenges many of our small companies face, and particularly our minority-owned businesses. And this information is helping us to inform some of the work we're beginning with the Urban League, which I'll cover in a minute. Our staff has been very diligent in our efforts to stay in touch with businesses during this time. In fact, in 2020, we recorded more than ten thousand individual instances of outreach by our staff to area companies. And we will continue to monitor the situation as we progress to the vaccination stage of the essential workforce, and hopefully into a transition back to a more open environment. When I was last here, I told you a little bit about our new partnership with the Urban League. We recently announced a partnership with the Urban League of Greater Oklahoma City, Inc., aimed at creating a stronger dialogue and engagement of the Oklahoma City business community around issues of social justice and anti-racism. There are five priorities in our program, and the first was initiating a business-community conversation about anti-racism. We began a series of webinars last October that will continue through April on a range of topics, including how to have difficult conversations in the workplace, recognizing and understanding implicit bias, how to eliminate bias in the hiring process, developing diversity programs in the workplace, minority supplier development, and more. The next steps in our process are to develop two councils to further extend our work. The Oklahoma Consortium for Inclusive Excellence will bring together the leaders inside of our companies that are executing diversity and inclusion activities. We want to bring forward the best practices, facilitate the exchange of ideas, identify areas of cooperation, and encourage the continued growth of these programs. This group will begin meeting in May, following the completion of our education series. The second council is the Executive Roundtable for Inclusive Excellence. This group will help to lead the remaining three priorities in our partnership, increasing minority supplier networks and employment, the development of an annual research publication that tracks and reports on diversity and economic equality in Oklahoma City, and creating leadership and mentorship programs. I said this before, but I want to reiterate what a great partner we have in this work with the Urban League, as they have decades of experience and shared goals around workforce development, criminal justice reform, and more. Moving on, I'd be remiss if I didn't offer another hearty congratulations to the council on the opening of the new convention center. This is yet another MAPS project that is completed on time and under budget. But as important, it is a truly outstanding facility in places Oklahoma City in such a strong position to grow our hospitality community coming out of the pandemic. As I think you're aware, we were host to a very unique, multi-city, hybrid, in-person, and live event for a meeting planner organization in January, bringing meeting planners to see the facility as our top priority. And we jumped on the opportunity and secured one of the five national regional meetings. In addition to this conference, we've also been able to take advantage of hosting a number of equine and livestock events that were not possible in their regular venues and other locations. And strict protocols, masks, social distancing made these events very successful in Oklahoma City and really helped to buoy our hospitality industry during a very difficult time. The last thing I want to say about the hospitality industry is we have some really great news, and that is that Zach Craig has joined our organization as the new president of the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Bureau. Zach started work with us right in the middle of the deep freeze just a couple weeks ago. He's a native Oklahoman, a graduate of the University of Tulsa. He received his master's in the OSU Hospitality Program and began his career right down the street from where I am at the Sheridan Hotel. More recently, he was a regional sales manager for Obby Hotels in Atlanta. So he comes to Oklahoma City, ready to make certain our new convention center gets off to a good start. Want to say just a little bit about economic development. We definitely ended the year on a high note with a number of announcements in the last quarter, including Amazon's additional warehouse with over five hundred positions, and then two really unique companies, engineering-driven announcements with Skydweller Aerospace with seventy-five employees, and North Start Scientific, forty employees. Both of these companies are doing very cutting-edge work that really reinforces the appeal of Oklahoma City for aerospace companies. In our ongoing conversation with existing companies, we're still finding a lot of good news. Just during the last quarter of 2020, companies were anticipating adding another eleven hundred-plus employees, and we've already learned of another four hundred and forty new jobs being added since January one. So our pipeline of economic development is strong, and since our last meeting, we've added thirty-two new projects to our pipeline. There's been a whole bunch of retail announcements. Retail in 2020 was certainly a mixed bag. Many retailers suffered from slower sales, but at the same time, other categories really thrived. And we've literally had dozens of new retailers open, everything from coffee shops to chicken and pickle to a Blue Zoo to Flower Child to Barque, and on and on and on, I could read you along this. But we also executed two special marketing partnerships last year to help assist our small retailers. Stand Tall Shop Small was the theme of our program, which we executed in partnership with our commercial districts, with digital marketing strategy signage and earned media. We ran this program initially last summer as stores reopen, and then again over the holidays. Last thing I'll comment on is the legislative session has begun, and we're working closely to monitor and oppose legislation that preempts the city or presents unfunded mandates to the city. We're also working hard on the passage of a regional transit bill, Senate Bill 967. It's also a priority to protect funding for our eight-year transportation plan. We're monitoring and advocating to ensure that businesses can still protect their private property rights to limit guns on their premises. And of course, we're working to maintain incentives that help us grow the economy. So with that, I will conclude, happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you for the opportunity to present this update.
Thank you, really great update, and as always, we appreciate your partnership with the city. Any questions for Roy?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
First, thank you for the presentation. And I understand, as you talked about the Urban League and the partnership and what we're wanting to do, I am curious to know, as far as the chamber is concerned, what work have you all done for your structure as far as the chamber itself to ensure the diversity, equity, and inclusion? Because I do understand that there were some, some folks that were working there that were concerned as far as the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. And unfortunately, we're not able to get the resolve that they wanted. So I am curious, in order for us to do all this work together, we also have to look at ourselves and our, what we're doing to make sure we're working together in that effort as well.
I concur, and you know, we have internalized it just as we have put on all of these programs at our organization too. So we have significantly diversified our employment, and we plan to continue doing that. We're making all kinds of efforts in all of our divisions to reach out, find qualified candidates for positions. So we're doing as much as we possibly can to internalize all of the external communications that we're providing.
Is it possible to get a demographic of you all as far as what that looks like?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, we actually publish that, it's on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Roy?
Hey, Roy. Good morning, and thank you, as the councilwoman said, for your presentation. I've been following very closely the Rome Powell Fed Chairman and Treasury Secretary talk about what they think the second part of the year might look like in next year. I'm just curious first, like, where are you kind of at right now when it comes to thinking about the local economy in the third and fourth quarter? And then what are you kind of thinking for twenty-two?
Well, we use the same economists that the city uses to try to understand kind of what's going on. So we continually look at it. You know, until, until COVID, I think, you know, comes to some kind of reconciliation, it's really hard to say. We're seeing a lot of companies continue to work remote. We see others, though, beginning to bring people back in. Every company's a little bit different, but you know, until there's more clarity and until there is more certainty, there's still a reservation. You know, what, what has been hurt the most, as I mentioned, is the hospitality industry. The majority of occupancy today is leisure travelers. Where before the pandemic, the majority of occupancy were business travelers. And, and most companies are not allowing their employees to travel on business. So that impacts the airlines, it impacts the hotels, it impacts restaurants, et cetera. So until the business side of all of this returns to something of normalcy, it's really hard to predict. But on the other hand, you know, retail sales, home purchasing, all of that is, is strong, and everybody kind of thinks there's a pent-up demand, and that as soon as, you know, people get vaccines and we have immunity, that we'll get back to some other much higher stage of business. So, you know, we're cautiously optimistic that, you know, we're gonna see things return to a better state than what they are today. But it's just a matter of when is that, and that has to do a lot with vaccines.
Thank you. And going back to your earlier comments about the commercial districts, coincidentally, I was just talking to one of our council staff about this yesterday. I would like to work more closely with you all. I know that there's already been folk from Economic Alliance, et cetera, who reached out recently, conversations about minority-owned businesses. Yet, what I'm, what I'm especially interested in right now are kind of two, two things. One is because I suspect that pent-up demand is exactly right. You know, I haven't had a haircut in a year. I, you know, if I've, if I've had a, if I've had a drink on, at a bar, it's been outside, as far away from anybody, and almost no one there whenever I go. Haven't really eaten inside of a restaurant, and I haven't been to a movie theater, I haven't gone dancing. Like, I've tried to, you know, set that example, right? So I'm ready, right, whenever, whenever it's time and the pandemic's over, I'm ready. I suspect that's true for a lot of other people who've adhered to the sort of what science has been telling us. I am particularly interested in our commercial districts, is the first thing, though. You know, when, I have seen some of the recent, you know, publications you all have put out that are, you know, marketing our districts, like the Thirty-Ninth Street District, or, you know, you see Uptown. And I think about Uptown and Paseo especially, and Thirty-Ninth, because all three of those from 2017's Better Streets, you know, as you're very well aware, are all receiving a placemaking investment. And by the time we get to the end of this year, beginning of next year, each one of those historic commercial districts will have received that, that sort of upgrade to their infrastructure. And I just think that is a really good time to, to try and, you know, do what we can to help the existing small businesses in those respective districts with what you all learned from either the technical assistance side of things or the loans and grants, these sorts of things. That's something I'm really interested in for our existing small businesses in those districts, not just limited to those three, of course, but the commercial districts across the city, you know. MAPS4 is set-in-motion stuff with Capitol Hill, the Clara Luper Corridor, Britton District, Stalker. It's really across, right, the city. But I'm really interested in how we can better partner with those existing businesses to, you know, connect with them, what, what are their concerns? And how can we marry their concerns with what you all learned during the kind of restructuring for a bit there of the GeoBond Economic Development Fund? So that's one thing I'm really interested in. I'm also interested in how do we cultivate people who might not own a business right now, but have that idea in their head, right? Whether it's a restaurant, a bar, a club, retail, any of those sort of service industry, I think coffee shop, bookstore, there are a lot of people, I guess I'm saying, that have these ideas. And right now, they are our bartenders, they are our servers, but they might have a degree in business, or, or in English, whatever it is. And I'm very interested how, in the ways that we have historically, you know, partnered with an Amazon or these bigger businesses, I see this, quite frankly, historic opportunity to be that sort of entrepreneurial guide for people who would be interested in taking shop in any of those urban corridors I just talked about, as commercial districts. And those are the kind of two things I'm really interested in. Stuff I heard a lot when I was knocking doors too, was people, were people saying, "But what about small businesses, and how can the government and the chamber better partner with them?" So I'm curious what lessons you all do think you've taken from that, the way that you all were able to work with us to have that relief for our small businesses? So those are kind of my two main things, is what can we be doing to better partner with the existing businesses in all these different historic districts, commercial districts? And then, you know, kind of helping to cultivate that, that relationship with new folk coming forward? I guess there is a third one, though. I'm also really concerned about maybe like rundown strip malls, right? Where I see payday loans, or I see gold for cash for gold, or, and then just giant parking lots spread out in front of them. Like, I think about those, those settings, and that doesn't seem like it would attract tourists, it doesn't seem like it would attract our existing residents. Like, I'm really interested in the redevelopment of some of these strip malls that exist all across the city. And especially as we've learned that we need people outside during the pandemic, and a lot of people discovered how much they enjoyed being outside. So I said two, but I guess I mean three, what can we be doing to try and encourage the redevelopment of these car-centric spaces that ultimately are delivering cars to pawn shops and gold this? And, and then again, those two other things about our districts, thank you.
Well, I would start first by saying that these districts, the better organized they are, the easier it is to sort of talk to them. A number of them have a director, and so our staff continually engages with that to find out, because each one is different, each one has a different sort of focus, each one has different kinds of retail mix. So finding out, you know, what does each one need as opposed to a sort of cookie-cutter approach to all of them? Because they, they're all unique, they all have their different assets and their different advantages. So it's, you know, what we, what we learn from them is that there is a diversity of needs. They face all kinds of issues. Some of the small businesses really just need a lot more marketing and technology assistance, because so much stuff is done online now, and a lot of them were not prepared for that kind of work. So it's finding out, where are you, and, you know, what do you individually need? The other thing, too, is that it, it, we found that that a lot of businesses were just so financially strapped, and that's why that Small Business Assistance Continuity Program was so vital, because it really saved a lot of the small businesses. You know, as to your question about startup businesses, that was one of the reasons we stood up the Innovation District, was to identify what are the missing things here for entrepreneurs and for new companies and startup companies? And that's what the Innovation District has been addressing and trying to, to stand up those kinds of needs that wannabe entrepreneurs need. Where do they go for assistance, what kind of assistance do they need? Because oftentimes, it's not monetary assistance. It's counseling assistance, it's helping with a business plan, it's helping developing a marketing strategy and that kind of stuff. And there's a number of different organizations in town that provide those services. Everything from the, some of the career techs to the universities, to private businesses, and to other nonprofits. And then as to your, your last question about strip centers, you know, there's not much that you can do, especially if property is owned by a non-resident, if they're from out of state, and you have a real difficult time engaging and finding out what they want to do. So that's a real challenge about doing that. And, and a lot of other cities are trying to solve these exact same problems, and we're doing our best to find out what those best practices are and to pursue them. No easy answer to your last question.
So that last question wasn't me just rambling, and that's actually something you're hearing across the country, it sounds like.
Absolutely, yes.
Very encouraging to know that those are conversations that are, that are taking place. And I, again, I plan on this being an ongoing conversation. I'm very interested in all three of those things. Because especially those, those places where you have that strip mall that doesn't have the sort of basic need sort of services of the surrounding neighborhoods, a lot of the people in those neighborhoods are the very residents who end up feeling, as you know, the most disconnected from the, the sort of Renaissance story we're experiencing. And they, and then those residents are the ones going, "Now wait a second, what about us?" And then that connects to maybe the resident who lives in that neighborhood who says, "Well, I have a dream of what, you know, it's a bakery, or it's this or that, and I would love to see that there." So that might, might not even be a commercial district, it might just be, you know, the strip mall that all of a sudden, if we said, "Hmm, if we could rethink this and connect that local resident to, you know, being able to do whatever it is in that corridor." So I don't, those, those three things are very, very important to me, because I know that I heard them quite a bit knocking doors. So my office will continue to kind of engage with you all with that, because I would love to keep learning about how I can be of assistance with it. So thank you, Roy.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mr. Williams, I just, I have a question, because I did go to the website after you told me to look and see. So I'm, I'm very curious, I'm not sure if I'm not looking at the right area for the demographics that you were referring to. Are you talking about overall demographics for the city?
No, all of our staff is shown on our website, because I think you were talking about our staff.
Yes, I was definitely talking about the staff.
Yeah.
I will look again, obviously, I must have missed that, so I'll look some more, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Roy? All right, well, again, Roy, thank you so much for taking some time this morning and for all that you guys do for our city, appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, three B on the agenda is a resolution recognized and commending Shane Williams on his selection as the March 2021 Teacher of the Month by More Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And we have a resolution here, we'd like to learn a little bit more about Shane. And so I would ask the clerk to please read.
Whereas Shane Williams has been named Teacher of the Month for March 2021 by More Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Shane received his Bachelor of Science degree in education from the University of Central Oklahoma. And whereas Shane has taught physical education at Red Oak Elementary School since 2018. He serves on the Red Oak Elementary Safe School Committee and has led students and colleagues to participate in the Oklahoma City National Memorial Marathon. And whereas Shane is a member of the Oklahoma Association of Health and Physical Education, the Oklahoma Coaches Association, and Healthy Schools Oklahoma. And he is a nationally certified instructor and member of the National Association of Archery. And whereas Shane has been recognized for his efforts at providing a quality education to his students by being awarded grants to fund instructional resources and experiences from Healthy Schools Oklahoma, the More Public Schools Foundation, and Donors Choose. And whereas Shane incorporates extracurricular activities and service learning opportunities so that his students can learn leadership qualities and responsibility while also building stronger relationships among their peers. And whereas Shane believes that his greatest contribution to education centers around his ability to build meaningful relationships with his students by investing in their interests and successes, both within and outside the classroom environment. And whereas Shane was also named Teacher of the Year for the 2020 2021 School Year by Red Oak Elementary School and a top five finalist for District Teacher of the Year for the 2021 School Year by More Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Shane Williams on his selection as March 2021 Teacher of the Month by More Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you very much, Amy. And why don't we pass this resolution and then we'd love to hear from Shane? So let's rev up Prime Gov here and see if we can get a motion in a second. There you go, cast your votes. And tell me, Amy or anyone, Mickey, if anyone is not voting, who seems to be present?
Councilperson McAtee, tell what she wants.
What was that, I'm sorry?
It's McAtee.
Oh, okay. Councilman McAtee, are you are you set up for voting? Okay, Councilman McAtee, how would you like to vote on this resolution while we get it resolved?
Affirmative or yes?
Okay, all right, put him down as a yes. All right, passes unanimously. Now, I believe I saw Shane on the line. Shane, how are you this morning?
I'm doing good, how are you?
Wonderful, well, congratulations and thank you for your service to our young people. We'd love to hear a few words from you.
Thank you so much, it's such an honor. This year has definitely been an interesting year, to say the least, but it's been rewarding as well. It's so great to be in person with More Public Schools, we've been in person all year long. We were a little bit worried about it at the beginning of the year, but it's turned out to be a great thing for us and for the kids. And it definitely offers some normalcy for our teachers. That's basically the only normalcy we do get is coming to school. So it has been a great year despite all the challenges and I'm just happy to be in the position I am.
Right, well, again, thank you so much for all you do and congratulations to you. And I suppose you've got a full day ahead, so we'll let you get to it. But thanks for joining us this morning.
Thank you so much.
All right. Okay, so item three C is a resolution of commendation for Major Scott Grubbs on his selection as the March 2021 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month. And we'd love to hear a little bit more about Major Grubbs, so the clerk, please read it.
Whereas Major Scott Grubbs has been a city employee for 22 years and is a fire liaison in the Office of Emergency Management. And whereas Major Scott Grubbs is the primary point of contact between the Office of Emergency Management and the Oklahoma City County Health Department regarding the vaccine needs of the city. And whereas Major Scott Grubbs is responsible for collecting, transporting, and storing the COVID-19 vaccine for distribution to the city workforce. And whereas Major Scott Grubbs is also responsible for gathering paperwork after each vaccination pod and delivering it to the health department so vaccine usage can be tracked. And whereas Major Scott Grubbs provides logistical support to the vaccine operation and has put in long hours to ensure the vaccine is distributed in a timely manner and has not been wasted. And whereas Major Scott Grubbs works hard to ensure an accurate count of the number of available vaccines and ensures there are enough staff reporting to pods to match the number of vaccines. And whereas this council desires to recognize Major Scott Grubbs for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the City of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Major Scott Grubbs, March 2021 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Thank you very much. And by the way, commendations to whoever's been making the Employee of the Month selections because they've been very timely, they are definitely relate to the times in which we live. So Major Grubbs' work on vaccinations obviously falls in that category. Why don't we go ahead and adopt this resolution? And then if Major Grubbs is with us, we'll we'll hear from him. So let's take a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
David, I vote McAtee votes yes, we're still having technical difficulties.
All right, understood, thank you, Councilman. Passes unanimously. All right, is Major Grubbs with us? Do we know? We don't see him? Okay, well, Major Grubbs, if you're listening or if somebody knows him and is listening, please pass on our best wishes and our congratulations and our deepest gratitude for his service to the people of Oklahoma City. All right, we will now move on to some appointments. I've been busy the last couple of weeks with this. And we have appointments to the Board of Appeals Building Code, Bond Advisory Committee, the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board, the Arts Commission, the Oklahoma City Employees Retirement System, the Oklahoma City Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, and the Riverfront Design Committee. These are items D through K on item three. And we can take them with one motion if the council so desires. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, Councilman McAtee, how do you wish to vote?
McAtee votes yes.
And they passed unanimously. Thank you to all those people who are willing to serve our city. All right, item four is Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we can take with one motion. We've got a motion in a second, cast your votes, Councilman McAtee.
Affirmative.
Okay. Passes unanimously, Prime Gov is moving fast today, that's good. All right, requests for uncontested continuances, item five, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, we do have several on today. Starting on page 11, item nine E, this is PUD 1801. This has been requested to be deferred to March 16th. And on page 12, item nine I, SPUD 1270. This has been requested to be deferred indefinitely. On page 13, item nine V12, this is CE 1043. This has been requested to be deferred to the 13th of April. On page 14, and this starts with the labidated, unsecured, and abandoned structures. And all these items, they will be inserted from the agenda. Under labidated structures, item nine Y1D, 1722 Northeast 20th Street, the owner has removed. On page 14, under nine Z1, unsecured structures. Item D, 1719 Northeast 18th Street, to re-notify for a new owner. Item E, 3608 Northwest 22nd Street, the owner is secured. Item F, 637 Southeast 29th Street, the owner is secured. Item G, 1117 Northwest 36th Street, the owner has secured. On page 15, item nine AA1, this is abandoned structures. Item F, 1719 Northeast 18th Street, to re-notify for a new owner. Item G, 637 Southeast 27th Street, the owner is secured. And item H, 1117 Northwest 36th Street, the owner is secured. And that's all the items I have.
City Manager?
Yes.
I, the sound was kind of giving me a bit off base at the very start with the items requiring separate votes. Would you mind just repeating those for my my benefit?
This is on nine E, PUD 1801, is that the ones you're looking at?
Yes, please.
Okay, nine E, PUD 1801, this will be deferred to the 16th of March. Nine I, SPUD 1270, this will be deferred indefinitely. And then nine V1 and 2, CE 1043, will be deferred to the 13th of April.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, item six, revocable permits, which there are none today. Now we're going to pull up, as we customarily do, an item from council. This is item 11A. This is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency amending, Chapter 23, entitled Health and Sanitation. Some might know this as the mask ordinance. And we do usually pull this up so that the Oklahoma City County Health Department can get on with their other business. And we'd like to hear from them whenever we consider extensions to this ordinance. So Councilman Stone Cypher, I turn it over to you. And if you wish to turn it over to Phil Maytubey, do so at your convenience.
Yes, thank you, Honor. Phil, I'd like to hear from you first before we discuss voting on the ordinance, please.
Sure, glad glad to be here to discuss this. Zach or Amy, go ahead and start sharing my slides, please. I just, I know that you may think this is weird for me to show this sewage slide, but the reason I wanted to bring it up is it was a city project. It has shown, it gives us seven day lead time and predictability of cases. If you look at the the red line is the prediction, the dotted line is the observed, so it's pretty accurate. So this will help us not only predict case rise, but will also, in the meantime, they're also testing for variants. So let's just say we get a variant in here that we don't like, like the South African variant. It's going to give us some more tools to to deal with the situation that we have, either through going out and trying to do more testing or more vaccine. Next slide, please. So these are just averages, the numbers not that particularly important right now. What I wanted you to look at is the is the drop. So, you know, things are going in the right direction. I do want to kind of caution everybody, though, we have kind of hit a stagnant point right now. So we want to make sure that we're tracking the data every day to make sure that this stays down or make sure we don't get another rise. I know that there's some rises going on in other parts of the country. So this is the daily hospitalizations. So we did finally get into the green this week, so congratulations to us. That's 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 such a helpful thing for us to not have our hospitals so highly impacted with people in the hospital for COVID. So next slide, please. So deaths, this is the one that's concerning. Our deaths have have stayed fairly high, even though it looks like they have leveled out. You know, we know we're still dealing with the case rate rise that came right after the holidays. We'll just have to monitor this to see if this continues to stay at this rate or hopefully it will go down here fairly soon. And next slide, please. So this is a percentage of cases by deaths or percent of cases of deaths by demographics. So as you can see, the cases are in blue, the deaths are in gray, in the light green. So the majority of our cases are in females, but the majority of the deaths are in the males. Of course, it's been a predominantly white disease at this point. But you can also see some of these other demographics down here for the black as far as the cases and the death rate. You know, that's something that we're is troubling. We're trying to make sure that we get as much vaccine allocation and try to get access to as many folks as we can, no matter what the situation is. So the, oh, that's fine, go ahead. I wanted you to pay attention to this one because this is our, see that line that goes down the center? That's that blue dotted line, that's when vaccines arrived on the scene. So the first one is cases 65 and above. And the other one is the hospitalizations for 65 and above. So as you can see, they both started trending down pretty rapidly. Next slide, please. Same here, same trend line. The dotted line before is before vaccine, after that is with vaccines. And you can actually start seeing, you're seeing some some concrete information here, especially over the the over 65 group. So the things that are going on, the mitigation efforts, the vaccine is starting to show. If you look down here at the the hospitalization rates have stayed fairly high for even the under 65s. That's really the only way we can measure right now because that's just the way the portal's set up and it's hard to mine some of the data out of there, but that's where we're at right now. So next slide, please. This is the vaccine allocation for Oklahoma County and what we have been able to dispense and what we've received. So as you can see, this this was as of the 28th, we're over 200,000 now. So that's a significant amount of our population. We're right now, right around 24% of our population. So it's it's starting to have an effect. I mean, I think that's why you're seeing our hospitalizations and everything else going down. Because even though testing is rate driven, hospitalizations and deaths are not. So when you see a decrease in your hospitalizations, that's something that's not dependent on the amount of testing that we do. Next slide, please. So this is the amount of dosages that we have put out. So if you look at the, the the big one is total doses down here on the far right. So we have done 24.1% of our population here in Oklahoma County. That's pretty impressive when you look, when you think that we have 800,000 people in this county. So great effort by not only our health department, but our partners like the hospitals and the FQHCs. Just excellent work here. Our people always do great in disasters and this is no, this is no change. Next slide, please. So on this slide here, this is allocation, and I wanted you to pay attention to the purple line that's up here. The blue line and the green line are allocated, the blues allocations, like what we received each week. The green line is what was administered. And you'll notice those usually don't stay very far apart. We are staying in the upper 90 percentile as far as vaccines that we receive and administer within a seven day timeframe. Again, exceptionally good effort here in Oklahoma County and actually throughout the state. I think our state's doing a really good job trying to get the vaccine out. And Oklahoma City and Oklahoma County are a big part of that. Next slide, please. So this is administration demographics. Again, you could see primarily females looks appear to be a little more willing or able to get vaccines than males. And this is, I wanted to pay attention down here to the black because in the black, before we actually got access to recent data, it was at 3%. So our efforts are really starting to pay off in the black population of trying to get vaccine vaccine access to the population. I know you guys are probably aware, but we we work very hard. Uh, I know you, you guys are probably aware, but we, we work very hard at trying to make sure that the equity piece is in play when it comes to the vaccine administration. So hopefully those numbers will pick up, and, and I know they will pick up, especially when we get into the younger age groups, those should really start coming up at that point. Uh, next slide, please. And this is the administration by age group, and it's exactly what you would expect because we've been focusing on the over sixty-five age group for some time now. So if you, when you look at that percentage, that's really, uh, that's impactful, and I'll tell you why, because that is the age group that is the most likely to be hospitalized. And I believe that is the driver for why the hospitalizations have been going down. First, we protected the people who provide the service. Now we're trying to, uh, provide protection to the people that are most likely to go into the hospital, and it's working. And you'll see these other age groups really start to pick up as we, uh, get further down, you know, and we're now at phase two and we're down into the co-morbidities statewide. That's about another million people that are, uh, available for vaccines along with teachers and things of that nature. So you're going to see some, uh, pretty drastic improvement in the numbers here coming up very shortly. Uh, there you go. Seven-day moving average. The only dip you see right there was during the, uh, winter weather, ice storm, snowstorm, whatever you want to call it. After that, we have recovered and we're out there, uh, putting out as many doses as we can. So I think that's all. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you. Phil, I've, I've got a couple of questions, um, and I, I really appreciate the presentation, but, um, it, it, for many months now, I've really tried to focus on the hospitals because I'm concerned about hospitals being overwhelmed and the, the effects that that has on our first responders, our nurses, our doctors, and for that matter, our, uh, non-COVID patients who are trying to get access to the hospitals. And what I've been told is that we, we turned the corner on hospitals for now. Uh, I'm not saying everything's perfect, but, but we're seeing some of the lowest numbers we've seen since I think was told October of last year. And now we're down to what's called single tier one, which is the lowest level for hospitalizations. Could you, could you confirm that and, and, uh, explain a little, uh, where we are as far as our, our tiership is concerned?
Yeah, we're down in the green, which is the lowest tier you can be in. Every region in the state is now in green. So if your, if your object was to protect the hospitals and continues to be, then, then that's working. So I did want to, I want to give a little pause here because we're not exactly where we need to be yet. Because, uh, today we hit about five point five percent positivity on our testing. You know, our target goal is around five percent. We also, we, we haven't hit our target goal for case rate, which is about five per hundred thousand. And we're still probably double that at least right now. So those are the real measures moving forward that we're trying to hit. Uh, the case rate going down and the, the test positivity, best, you know, those are kind of rate-dependent, so we'll just have to look and see where we're at on those. Uh, I will, I do have some projected dates for you. I know this will be of high interest. So if we keep the ordinance in place, we do have a predictive model that was developed by Dr. Wendelbo over OU College of Public Health, and we are using it. If we, if we have the ordinance in place, it looks like we're going to hit, uh, that five case per hundred thousand in May. And then also, right now, our prediction, if everything holds the same, that's what the ordinance is and the mitigation efforts in place, is that we're going to hit herd immunity in June. So I know everybody's going to really be wanting to hear that because what that signals is a potential, uh, for us to have, uh, at least a somewhat normal lifestyle. I will tell you that public health is going to recommend that we continue to wear masks, whether it's an ordinance or a recommendation at this point. Right now, we still feel that an ordinance is, is still, uh, needs to be in place just to ensure that people don't drop their guard too much because we, we've seen some of that already, so.
Yeah, I, I guess what, how I'd respond is, um, it, it, it seems to me that there may be light at the end of the tunnel, uh, but we can't let our guard down. We've got to keep using these mitigation measures such as social distancing, washing our hands, wearing our mask. And, and the one thing I wanted you to comment on, if you wouldn't mind, is, uh, Gary Raskob was kind enough to send me, uh, and I don't know if many people know about this, a, a new journal of the, uh, American Medical Association that talks about the effectiveness of mask-wearing and the new compelling data that's contained in that publication. And if you could comment on that, I sure would appreciate it on why it's important for us to keep wearing our masks.
Sure, you know, at first there was a lot of confusion about mask-wearing, but now the actual data's coming out. We've had enough time to do some peer-reviewed studies, and it's showing that mask-wearing is highly effective, especially, uh, if you want to double mask. So, you know, we don't want to, we don't want people to go on vacation too quickly here because this is probably the, the number one item to prevent disease is, is the wearing of the mask. And then also this morning, I didn't know if you, uh, if you guys were keeping track of the news, but CDC is, is kind of warning about people busting out of the mitigation efforts too soon. I mean, they're concerned that this could just be a lag or it could just be a pause and then we, it'll be back to, uh, a case rate rise again, which would then kind of circle back into the same issues that we've been dealing with for some time. So it's one of those things where if we stay in place just a little bit longer, we're, we're going to pay the benefits of that. Uh, some of the other projections that we have also on the mitigation efforts, specifically mask-wearing, social distancing and washing your hands are, if this is in place up through June, it has the potential to save us up to nine, over nine thousand, uh, cases. Let's see, also five hundred and thirteen hospitalizations and potentially ninety-three deaths. Now, you guys realize this is a predictive model, but it has been fairly accurate. So that's, that's, that's what you get from keeping a mask ordinance in place. I hope that's explanatory enough.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. Um, Mark, I wanted to, to point out something because you brought up hospitalizations and it reminded me how important that issue was to you when you first authored this ordinance in July. So on the day we first passed this ordinance, we had two hundred and one of our residents in the Oklahoma City metro in the hospital for COVID nineteen, and that was, that was viewed by all of us as a crisis at that time. And to, last night, we had two hundred and seven. And so some, our perspective has changed a little bit because it got so horrible over the holidays when we were, when we topped seven hundred people that were in the hospital, that two hundred and seven feels better and, and rightfully so. But it is also about the same amount we were at when we first passed this ordinance because we felt that hospitalizations were too high. So I think it's just to reinforce everyone's point that they've made that, you know, we're not there yet. Clearly, we're, we're, we like the direction we're heading, but, um, this thing isn't over yet. And as you said, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but we're still in the tunnel.
Hey, Mayor, I wanted to point out one other thing, that four percent difference in positivity with the mask and the unmasked areas continues to hold. So when you apply, apply four percent across our population, that's a lot of people.
Yeah.
Phil, thank you, uh, for the presentation. The one thing I would say, I hope I don't see you giving us a report in June. That was encouraging news. Um, and with that, I would, uh, identify that this is an ordinance to be entered, introduced and adopted with an emergency, therefore it will take two votes. The current COVID nineteen safety code is due to expire on March fifth, twenty twenty-one, and this amendment will ex- extend the expiration date to April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So if there are no questions about the ordinance at this time, I would move for its approval.
Okay, uh, we do have three people who've signed up to speak, Councilman Stone Cypher. So let me, uh, let's pause on, on the motion for a moment and let's, uh, let's call on them. And we've got, uh, Matt Tibbetts. Is Matt Tibbetts on the line? We don't see him, okay? Christopher Geisler? Do you see him? Okay, uh, Mr. Geisler, if you can hear me, just, uh, state your name and address and, uh, keep your remarks to, to three minutes or less. If you're still speaking at two and a half minutes, uh, you'll get a warning from the clerk. Mr. Geisler? Oh, uh, push star six if you're, if you, you might be muted. We can't hear you if you're speaking. Mr. Geisler? Have you pushed star six, Mr. Geisler? If not, we may need to move on. Do we see Noah McGeehee on the line?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. McGeehee, please go ahead, state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less, thank you.
Thank you, sir. My name is Noah McGeehee. My address is ten seven oh one Longview Drive. Uh, I'd like to say good morning. I don't have much time, so I'll get right to the point. I'm asking the council today, once again, to not extend the mask ordinance. I don't say this as a question of medical science or social politeness or politics. To me, this is a question of how powerful the city council and mayor ought to be. Recently, the city council expanded their power through changes to the city charter. It made changes to, uh, fit the kinds of people it believes ought to be stakeholders. The city council now has the power to make their meetings digital and not be held accountable in person whenever they so choose. I find it curious that this meeting is being held over Zoom when the council has had meetings in person when the pandemic was a greater threat. I fear this is a precedent that will be with us permanently. The city council now has the power to make all of us cover our face or to wear anything, I suppose, should they so choose. They've made a joke of individual rights as if it were a quaint backwater idea that our founding fathers thought was worth sacrificing the blood of patriots time and time again, but not this council and not this mayor. To them, we are a nameless, faceless spreader of disease, and your right to choose for your life, your family, is not as important as that of Mark Stone Cypher and the Mask Bunch. Now, I realize that I'm just a taxpayer and I've never been to law school or been the president of an HOA. Even so, I have to ask, should whether or not you wear a mask be the choice of eight people? Should eight be greater than six hundred thousand or more? Should we willingly lay down our will to choose to you not as free men, but as slaves who do not have the strength to make the choice for ourselves and then live or die by it? The mayor and Mark Stone Cypher and the rest of the council have made it abundantly clear, you are not free Oklahoma City, you are safe. Your freedom is burned at their altar in the name of safety. But if being free is illegal in Oklahoma City, then I fear that that has made me into a criminal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes this, who have signed up to speak, and we can now return to those motions, Councilman Stone Cypher.
This time, I'd like to make the motion once Prime Gov comes up.
Mayor, before we do that, could I just ask a couple of questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Real quick. So as you stated earlier, when we started this, it was all boiled down to, uh, hospitalizations. We were at critical levels of hospitalizations. Now we're back to the green tier. But now we want to go ahead and continue it for another two months. Um, I find that troubling, be honest with you.
So the, Councilman, can I just, or can I just address real quick? You understand we have more hot people in the hospital today than we did the day we passed the ordinance initially. I just wanted to, you understood that correctly? Okay.
I realize that. Um, I also realize we started out trying to flatten the curve, we flattened the curve, and even though we had the mask ordinance, right, it ramped up like crazy. Um, let me ask you this, have we enforced the mask ordinance a single time with the Oklahoma City Police Department?
We have not issued any citations that I'm aware of. I know there are situations, and I don't know all the situations, but there will be situations sometimes, like if someone were to refuse to leave a store or something like that. I know we have had police called out on situations like that. I don't know the numbers, but in those cases, it's general, it's resolved, we take care of the issue and, and move on. So I'm not aware of any time that we've written any kind of citations on this.
And we all would agree that if we don't have the mask mandate, then private property owners can still require a mask, right?
They can, I think we get into the legal questions here, but they can. I will tell you that when we did put our ordinance in place, that, uh, retail associations, restaurant associations had reached out to us and had communication, and they said for their, for their, um, members that it was easier for them to be able to enforce within their store, if there was an ordinance there backing it up, it just helped them to be able to manage that. So we did get a lot of feedback from the industry, the retail industry and restaurant associations to, to recognize that it was a help to them to be able to help enforce that within their businesses.
So I want to be real clear, I'm not anti-mask. I think we all need to continue to wear masks. I can tell you personally, I wear my mask, I wear it at work every day. Um, but I don't wear it because we have a mandate. And, and I would ask that of, of the rest of the county, isn't you wear a mask? And I think we all do. Does anyone wear a mask because it's a mandate? Or do we wear it because we think it's the right thing to do? Um, of course, I wouldn't ask that question to Councilman Griner, but anyone else, do you wear a mask because it's a mandate?
Time to answer that. It's because of the right thing to do. But I, I, I would, I would add and, and I want to give you some comfort, uh, yesterday in, in talking with the mayor, uh, we are hopeful this is the last time we will have to do this. Uh, that's what we all want, uh, not to extend it again. And we are having such positive results, uh, I want to get it, I want to get those hospitalizations below two hundred and seven for our non-COVID patients to make sure they can get in and do even elective surgeries. And so, um, I've, I've talked to doctors, I've talked to people that work in the hospital. I, at Christmas, I had to spend two days in a hospital with my mother, and they are overwhelmed. Uh, and, and let's give them a break, let's get things better. And, um, I think that, that if we can pass this one more time, uh, I think we'll be helping our first responders, our nurses and our doctors.
Yeah, to echo what Councilman Stone Cypher said, I think that's a very reasonable hope. Obviously, we want to monitor the variants, we want to monitor any wild cards that might erupt in this situation in the next two months, but this is the first time I have felt like this very well could be the final extension. I mean, I think that's, that's a reasonable hope to have.
This is Councilman McAfee, I would like to inter- intervene a comment if I could. Uh, I am a person over sixty-five, in fact, I'm eighty-four. I made a decision that a mask was something that I should wear to protect myself and those that I come in contact with. I should have, however, I believe, the freedom to decide to wear that mask or not to wear that ma- mask. And so therefore, I continue since the beginning of the, this mask involvement, uh, to vote in favor of no mandatory mask, and I still stand by that. And I think that our citizens are intelligent enough, well-meaning enough to evaluate the situation for their own personal family and their own personal use and make a wise decision. Thank you, Your Honor.
In response to that, Larry, what I would say is, and, and I always go back to it, it's, uh, Jacobson versus the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is a United States Supreme Court case where the Supreme Court in nineteen oh five was dealing with a pandemic, it was smallpox, uh, and the court clearly held that in very, very limited in- instances, such as a pandemic, um, safety can trump. Uh, and that should be in a very, very rare in- instance. And so our Supreme Court's looking at it, looked at it before, our Supreme Court has said that we can mandate an ordinance like this, uh, and, uh, it was a seven-two vote back in nineteen oh five. And, uh, I think that's important, even if you're not a lawyer, to remember what the Supreme Court has previously said, what is precedent and what is the law of our country.
I think there's a difference, though, between what we could and should do. And I wouldn't argue that we can't do this, but I would definitely argue that we shouldn't do this. And I think that's the point that Larry was making.
Thank you, James.
And I agree with you, James. It's the question is, should we?
Councilman Stone, were you done?
Yeah, I, I think I'm done.
Okay. I just, you, you, we all jumped in. I just, you, we all jumped in and I just wanted to make sure. You said you had several questions. I just wanted to make sure we got to them. All right.
Any thoughts on, maybe I'm not done. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any thoughts on how we came up with the April 30th date versus March 28th date?
I'll defer to Mark on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was a suggestion from councilperson Greenwell. And you may want to chime in, David, on your thoughts on that. We could look at another date, Todd, if that would make you feel more comfortable.
Mark, this is David. It just seemed like a good round, I'm sorry to use that word, round number, you know, the end of April. That pretty well gets us past the traditional cold and flu season, in my opinion. Now, again, this is a layperson speaking. And I do have to point to the dramatic, not a 4% decline, but a dramatic, almost zero cold, cold and flu season this past year. And I have to believe it's contributed to all of the things we've been doing in terms of the mask, washing hands, social distancing. So that alone, my goodness, I think has been a pretty strong benefit. And then similarly, I've had contacts from business owners who say that they could not continue to operate and individually present a mask requirement. And so they welcomed this citywide mask requirement. And then finally, I'd say this. Of all the mask requirements throughout our country, we have the most lenient mask requirement. Anytime you're outdoors, you're not required to maintain your mask. In certain business situations, if you can maintain social distancing, you don't have to maintain a mask on, assuming you don't have tech with the public. We've even made an exemption from a religious standpoint. I think those were all very important exemptions that we took into consideration in making this. And just my comment on April 30th. Personally, I just think that's kind of the end of our springtime weather here in Oklahoma, because summer, I mean, it's spring the day, summer the next day. And for May 1st going forward, I am hopeful, I'm not going to suggest that it's going to take place, but I'm hopeful that this could be the very last extension that we have to provide for in regards to a mask. Again, I'm not saying we are. We'll have to look at the facts as we get closer to the end of April to make that determination. But unlike everybody else, I certainly have fatigue as it relates to masks. I think everybody does. I admire the school kids who, like my grandkids, don't complain at all. They just wear their masks all the time and realize it's for the good of everybody. I admire the kids that I know, I'm sorry, the young people that I know who are attending college and take the mask requirement very seriously. They don't want to have to go back to a situation where they're trying to complete their college degree remotely. There's a world of difference in having in-person classroom settings compared to remote settings. And they're willing to wear a mask just to avoid being, having be sent home to complete the semester. So those are just my thoughts. I understand everybody's perspective on this, but I just thought I'd share my feelings. Thank you.
Todd, one other thing, and I want to convey this to you. Several cities in Oklahoma chose the end of the school year, and that's something we chose not to propose.
So, again, I just want to be clear. I'm not saying we should all take our masks off starting today or that we shouldn't maintain social distancing or that we should no longer wash our hands. I think those are all great things. And I agree with you, Councilman Greenwell. I think when you look at cold and flu season, it really hasn't been here this year, although my allergies still lack though. But I'm just, I don't know. I still don't think, I just don't understand the purpose of trying to mandate it for others. So with that, I mean, I'm done. Thank you. And Councilman Stone Cypher, I mean, thank you for all your work. Oklahoma City County Health Department, they've done a lot of great work on this thing, you know, really done a great job of keeping us informed. I just, I disagree.
Thank you, Councilman.
May I join the conversation, please?
Councilman Cooper, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to echo a lot of what I just heard from Councilman Greenwell. I think in a lot of ways, his position aligns with my own. First, first things first, and I know my words, I think I already know how this vote's going to shake out, called a hunch, just from past precedents. So I'm not here to convince the no votes. And I'm guessing, I know where Todd's heading too, Councilman Stone, excuse me. But I would like to speak to Todd's argument. Because I suspect there are people in our city probably, there's some who are going to be in that Todd moment. And I think this is important as we near the end. So first things first, I just want to quote from a New York Times article on this. So quote, "In late November, for example, the governor of Rhode Island limited social gatherings and some commercial activities in the state. Eight days later, cases began to decline. The trend reversed eight days after the state's pause lifted on December 20th." So that is an actual concrete example. That's not, it's not our feelings. That's not a hunch. That's data. That is data-driven, that when the state of Rhode Island put in those sort of physical distancing requirements and then lifted them. So they lifted them as they thought, oh, things are just going much better. It's kind of like going back to Camp Crystal Lake on Friday the 13th before you killed Jason. Like, that's what happened, just to make the metaphor all the more or the analogy all the more clear. So that's one thing I would say. We have actual evidence of a government lifting those restrictions and seeing their numbers rise. In fact, if you look at that same article, and I'm going to quote, because I want to caution everybody, and again, I really appreciated Councilman Greenwell's caution too. Look, we all want to be in a place where this is done, where this is done. In fact, I think the most insulting arguments I've heard in the last year, and I really mean that insulting, were when I heard people say that this was some sort of power grab by the city council. What? Why? Like, that doesn't make a lick of sense. I'm sorry. I have zero respect for that argument. Because it's personal. They're saying that we personally grabbing for power. Why would we want to make everyone look like Sub-Zero from Mortal Kombat? That doesn't make any sense. It just doesn't. So the other thing I want to say, though, is, and this is again quoting from this article, "Looking ahead to late March or April, the majority of scientists interviewed by the Times predicted a fourth wave of infections." So I want to read that one more time. Because I heard people being very excited as if April would be the last time, and I'm hopeful too. But again, quote, "Looking ahead to late March or April, the majority of scientists interviewed by the Times predicted a fourth wave of infections. But they stressed that it is not an inevitable surge if government officials and individuals maintain precautions for a few more weeks." That is the argument for doing a yes vote today. That is the literal argument for it. There is no way to make that more crystal clear, that a fourth surge is coming. Why is a fourth surge coming? Because of the variants that we heard earlier from Mr. May Tubby, whether it's the South African one, the England one, you name it, those variants are about to become part of our reality this month. We have the ability as human beings. We have the ability, we have, we have the will to do this, right? It's up to us. It's up to us. So that's another thing I would say there. And then when you look at summer in that same article, it says, "Summer will feel like summer again, sort of." So the good news is that despite the uncertainties, the experts predict that the last surge will subside in the United States sometime in early summer. If the Biden administration can keep its promise to immunize every adult by the end of summer, the variant should be no match for the vaccines. Combine vaccination with natural immunity and the human tendency to head outdoors as weather warms, and it may not be exactly herd immunity, but maybe it's sufficient to prevent any large outbreak. And that was an independent data scientist who created some of the most prescient models of the pandemic. And so, you know, we can, and now I'm quoting again here, we can imagine groups of vaccinated people will be able to get together for barbecues and playdates without fear of infecting one another. Beaches, parks and playgrounds will be full of mask-free people. Indoor dining will return along with movie theaters, bowling alleys and shopping malls, although they may still require masks. The virus will still be circulating, but the extent will depend in part on how well vaccines prevent not just illness and death, but also transmission. Todd, and anybody who's got that sort of wavering moment, the behavior we model as a government sends a message to our residents. If we were to lift this today, right now, today, we would be signaling to our people ahead of that surge this month, that everything is already back to normal. A vote signals that to people. There's something called symbolism in humanity. And that symbol, that vote signifies that we are saying to our residents, we've moved back to good. And when we send that signal in this particular historical moment, we would be doing so right as that surge is coming our way. Which means we would be, we as government, we as leaders would be signaled, we would, we would be responsible for that surge. That's what I'm saying. We would, we would make the surge worse than it, it's already going to exist. The question now is, how bad is it? How bad is it? And you heard those models from Mr. May Tubby earlier. How many more deaths do we want to be responsible for? Can we mitigate the harm to our residents? That is the symbolic message we send with this vote. That is it. And, and so there, you know, it was really smart of you, Councilman Stone, to reference earlier that we remember from a previous debate on this council when someone said that if, a councilperson said, if this were not the law, they would not wear their mask. Todd, there are many people in this city. That is it. Also, to Councilman Greenwell's point. I have so many businesses, I'm thinking of a bookstore right here in my neighborhood, that told me the second we implemented this vote, their sales went up because their customers felt safer than they had in months, in months, to leave their house to participate in the marketplace again. If we lift this, we are putting our small businesses in a place where economic hurt could be their reality again. And to City Manager Freeman's point, we could be putting them, quite frankly, in danger, where there are people who will fight them, literally fisticuffs. Y'all remember Stillwater, Oklahoma, a few months ago, where people were literally threatening the lives of business owners. Okay? So those are all the realities. And I, again, I find it very interesting. So many people talk about freedom, 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 freedom. I don't hear a lot of those same people, especially when you talk about garments. I don't hear a lot of those same people complaining when it used to be against the law in this city for someone like a drag queen couldn't really exist because we literally had laws that say that they had to wear the article of clothing of their assigned sex. We could arrest people for going to perform at a drag show. And I don't remember people arguing back then about whether that was right or wrong. In fact, very often, those were the same people saying, lock them up. So I just don't understand a lot of these, these arguments. I'm happy to have debates about freedom. But I think that it's a, we have to meet this moment. We have to meet this moment. So I want to applaud Councilman Stone Cypher for your continued leadership in this way. But I think whether or not we're all back to movie theaters and whether or not my students are back to in-person learning, whether or not the enrollment numbers of our universities are back to good in the fall depends on the state of this virus this summer. And that's what this vote is. And if my tone doesn't sound so pleasant, even though I'm trying to force that smile on my face, it's because we all know we're going through it right now. We all know that this is one of the hardest winters that we have faced in 100 years. And that's why I find it insulting when people say we'd want to power grab to keep this going. I want my students back in the right places. I want to be out with my friends again. And I think that this vote gets us there. So that's a yay for me.
Thank you, Councilman Cooper. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yes, I'll just make a few comments. I didn't really plan on saying anything. I just planned on voting yes. But the reason I will explain the reasoning for this now, I think it's very important for us to understand what we heard in the presentation. With this ordinance in place, we will be at five cases per 100,000 to be achieved by May and herd immunity by June. Also, we understand as far as our disadvantaged populations, black and brown communities, we are still under par when it comes to the vaccination process. It is not equitable right now in the current stance. 6% of African Americans have been vaccinated in our city. We had to have and asked for more data and for more equity in the process. Just last week, there was a press conference made at the state Capitol where the representative Lowe asked me to join him in explaining what is happening across our city and what's happening across our black and brown communities. And it's up to us to ensure that safety for our residents. I have seniors, many seniors, who have continued to reach out to me personally, because my number has been given out, for them to get a vaccination. And I'm working through the process of continuously texting, calling, putting it in myself when I see the signup genius pop up for seniors and folks in our community who are unable to navigate through the system to get signed up to get a vaccine. So these are complicated times in dealing with, with what we have and how we get where we need to go. But with this in place, it helps us to be able to work through the process that we're continuing to have to work through to get people vaccinated. I got a text message this morning, right before I got here to this job, from a senior who needs to be vaccinated. I have talked to seniors in their 80s and 90s who need to be vaccinated and do not know how to go through this process because it is so complicated. So these are the things, when I'm looking at this type of process, I'm looking at the protections of the process. Because that's what we have to deal with. Not only a mask, but we have to deal with the process of ensuring equity in the vaccination process. The equity in even being able to get tested. We had problems with getting tested last year for our black and brown communities. And I know especially in our Hispanic population, they have been hit harder than most. Not only across our city, but across our nation, just like our black and brown, our black folks in Oklahoma City. While we have been very lucky, very lucky, and I say that with hesitancy to say lucky, that we haven't seen it to the magnitude. We've seen it in other black communities across the country. We have still seen it, and it has hit us harder than it should. We have still seen it, and it has hit us harder than it should have. And that is because of access. So when we see a mask sign in front of buildings before we enter, we know that this is going to be a protection. And even with that, as I've said before last year, when we made the vote in the first place, that it, there is also going to be an issue of criminalization with masks for those who may experience that. Although we haven't had it yet, it, there's still always a possibility of something happening. But we have to continue to work through that. And I'm, I'm happy to see that we are working again through vaccinations, getting better and working through our Oklahoma City County Health Department and our other partners that are within our communities to ensure vaccination comes to, to our city and especially those that do not know how to navigate through this process. So, uh, yes, vote for me all the way.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think, uh, Councilman Stone Cypher, you were looking to maybe make a motion if there's no other comments.
I'm ready to make a motion once Prime comes up.
All right, we have a motion in a second on the ordinance. This is simple passage of the ordinance. Please cast your votes.
Mayor, this is David Greenwell.
Yes, David.
May I just make one final comment, not to impact the vote, but I do think the city has been very uh open and supportive of those on both sides of the equation by not implementing a long-term mask mandate. We've been very flexible to have these uh extensions occur roughly every six weeks just to take into account developments in terms of new information that may be developing. And at the time we first started, there wasn't even a vaccine on the horizon. I mean, we knew they, they were working on it, but we did not have one. So I wanted to remind generally the public that I think we've, we've been very accommodating in terms of always having to bring this back for review as opposed to making some type of a indefinite or long-term mask mandate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Greenwell. I, I mean, that is worth pointing out. We have taken a very different approach than almost every other city in Oklahoma that I know of. I think Tulsa City Council has only voted two or three times, and we have voted, who knows how many? I've lost count, but six or seven times probably. And, and that's obviously partly due to your influence and your request to, to do that. But you're right that it certainly gives us the opportunity to reevaluate the situation uh on a more regular basis. Okay, we have an open vote. Let's, uh, if everyone has cast their votes. Is Councilman McAtee still voting verbally? Okay, Councilman McAtee, how do you wish to vote? Uh, this is to pass the ordinance. Councilman McAtee, are you there? Uh, you are muted, Councilman McAtee. How do you wish to vote?
We're getting it.
I can hear you now. How do you wish to vote?
No.
Okay, got it. Okay, ordinance passes six to three. Now, Councilman Stone Cypher.
Your Honor, I would like to move that the ordinance be adopted with an emergency.
All right, so this is the motion for the emergency, which allows the ordinance to take effect immediately without a gap.
Mayor, before we vote on that.
Yeah, Councilman.
Can you explain, can you explain once again what the emergency does? I've, I've got a lot of, I get a lot of emails, and there's a ton of confusion about it.
Yes, I, I would, I will be happy to explain that and, and in turn, a little bit uh your position uh throughout this. The, the first vote is on whether you believe the ordinance is appropriate. And as you saw, we've had the same vote on that since the very beginning, six to three vote. And that is the question of whether you think, you know, we should have an ordinance on this topic. The second vote merely sets the date of effectiveness. A, an ordinance normally takes effect either at a date that is set in the ordinance or thirty days. We don't have an, I'm getting head nods. Yes, thirty days after the vote. Well, in this case, ever since we have begun doing um the extensions, thirty days after the vote would leave a confusing gap to the people of Oklahoma City. You would, you would have the ordinance potentially expire and then return. And uh you, Councilman Stone, have, have always felt that that, that though you do not support the ordinance, you do understand and support the continuity and the, the clarity for the people of Oklahoma City in, in maintaining um that consistent uh situation, whether it's with or without an ordinance. And so you have traditionally voted for the emergency. I, I obviously do not want to presume what you will do today, but obviously you know how I feel on that. And then I've been very grateful, and I think uh those supporters of the ordinance have been grateful that you have seen the, the good governance and consistency and clarity uh and not having the ordinance go away and come back, which is what would happen if this, if this next vote failed. Is that, is that a good explanation?
Yes, thank you.
A thirty-day wait period would create a tremendous amount of confusion, confusion in the marketplace.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, so this is a, and a, this is a motion that has been made by Councilman Stone Cypher, seconded by Councilwoman Hammond to add the emergency, which would again, as I just described, allow for consistency, clarity, uh easy understanding of, of where the ordinance stands in the next few weeks. Uh, and with that, uh, cast your votes. Councilman McAtee, uh, how do you wish to vote?
I wish to vote no, Mayor. Thank you.
Got it, thank you. This requires seven votes, I should have said. And it passes seven to two. Uh, thank you all very much. I, I think that it, it's not surprising that at the beginning and the end, I think, and, and we don't know if we're at the end, but we have obviously had a discussion this morning about how we think we might be near the end, that we might see the end, we might be seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. It's not surprising that that's kind of the hardest part, right? That's the transition into a new phase and then into a different phase. And so, you know, I think the fact that this was the lengthiest discussion we've had on this since the beginning is, is not surprising. And uh, but I'm glad that we're continuing to maintain our precautions. It is so very important that we finish this pandemic strongly. And uh, thank you all for your time on this. And thank you, Councilman Stone Cypher, for your continued leadership. Okay, we will now return to the normal agenda, uh, returning to regular order. And we will, that means we are at the top of page two of your printed agenda. And we will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through C, we can take with one motion. All right, we got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilman McAtee, how do you wish to vote?
You should be able to vote with this iPad, Mayor.
Oh, are you able to vote? Oh, it looks like he, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, it looks like he voted. All right, very good. I will stop asking then. Passes unanimously. All right, we will adjourn OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through C, we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA and we'll convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Now, we actually have a presentation here on item B. So Mr. City Manager will start there.
Yes, sir. Chris Browning, our Utilities Director, is with us this morning just to explain this item. I mean, it's an item that was actually presented to us a couple of months back to talk about the fact of steps that were being taken to dissolve OC and make it a part of the Water Utility Trust. And I'm just going to let Chris take us through what this document does and maybe talk a little bit about the process going forward that we will see um i- in relation to other items that will have to come to the council and kind of what the timeline looks like right now. So Chris, um, if you could take it from there and uh explain this item.
Thank you, Craig, and good morning. I'm Chris Browning, Utilities Director. So back in October twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty, there was a joint resolution approved by City Council, OC, and, and OQUIT to authorize the preparation of all documents necessary to consolidate solid waste management services under the Water Utilities Trust. Uh, Utilities Department staff engaged Bond Counsel, Special Tax Counsel, the Municipal Counselor, and Financial Advisor to prepare the necessary documents to effectuate the merger. So this resolution today does a couple of things. First of all, the defeasance of OC revenue bonds by approving an escrow deposit agreement, the engagement letter with PFM Asset Management as our investment advisor to purchase the securities to fund that escrow, the release of the solid waste management system lease, the assignment or transfer of agreements, uh assets, licenses, and certificates to the Water Utilities Trust, and all other documents um to effectuate the transfer of the solid waste management system responsibilities to OQUIT. And then further, uh, there's a, an item nine AE, which is the City Council Resolution, which would generally do the same thing. In addition, it would authorize the approval of OQUIT uh solid waste management system lease. And then this afternoon, uh, there's an OQUIT resolution that authorizes OQUIT solid waste management system lease term for fifty years, the acceptance of the assignment or transfer of agreements, assets, licenses, and certificates to OQUIT. The amendment uh of the financial indenture and agreements to include the solid waste management system under OQUIT, and then all other documents uh to effectuate the transfer of the ownership responsibilities of solid waste management system to OQUIT. So there's three resolutions that will be presented and considered today. Uh, this consolidation, if approved, um, has a quite a few other steps remaining. The documents have to be signed by the, the respective uh chairpersons and the mayor. And then the transfer of the assets and the, and the setting up of the funding to defees the uh, the bonds for uh OC. So the process will, will take uh about another three months. Sometime in June, uh, everything should be done. We expect the last OC meeting to be conducted the end of April in that meeting uh with the council. And then ultimately, the defeasance of the bonds will take effect uh in July of twenty-twenty-seven, and then officially OC will be dissolved. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Chris.
Our Director Browning, excuse me. Thank you for that. I just have a couple of follow-ups. Just make sure for clarity's sake I'm understanding. It sounds like this process is to make it where we are able to um basically access kind of like lower interest rates kind of across the board for this process. Is that one thing that's kind of happening here?
No, sir. OC and OQUIT are, are both triple A rated, and so the rates are the same for both. This does have some financial a- advantages for our, our ratepayers, both the uh OC and the OQUIT ratepayers. Uh, if you recall, back in October, the primary reason for doing this is to, um, to merge the two uh so that the revenues uh can be combined. They will be individually applied to expenses, but the revenues can be combined to help us with the debt service coverage ratio. And that debt service coverage ratio is a major consideration in the bond rating. So, so with the OQUIT revenues and the OC revenues combined, we have um we have an advantage in that uh those combined revenues will help us with that one thing, that debt service coverage ratio. But be assured that these revenues are applied to the expenses related to water individually, wastewater individually, and solid waste management individually. Uh, I hope that answers your question, sir.
That does, thank you. And it leads to a follow-up. So our residents, what benefits will they see from this, would you say?
Well, we have a very large capital improvement program for the Water Utilities Trust. And, and the uh debt service is funded by the, the debt service has to have that, that fixed coverage ratio to qualify for the triple A rating. So if we can combine the revenues of OC, which has very little debt service, with OQUIT revenues, when the, when the bond rating agencies look at those combined revenues, it's a bigger number. So our fixed costs that we charge our ratepayers can be reduced while we execute the capital program going forward.
So that, you're, you're talking possi-, the possibility of, of maybe some lower water bills?
Well, I'm talking the possibility of uh not as high water bills. Yes.
Craig, you want to say?
Yes, sir. So one of the things that, that with the, with the capital program that we have, especially with the Toca Pipeline, water rates will have to be increased to main, to be able to maintain that and maintain the schedule of getting that completed. What this will do will affect how much it has to be increased. So there'll still be increases in water rates that will happen over the next several years, but it won't be as much as what it would be if we didn't have this in place.
Would it be possible, kind of like in a predictive model kind of way, to be able to communicate to our residents what we were, what we would anticipate those increases to have looked like were this not to take place?
So we're in the process of a cost service evaluation. And, and those things will be clearly articulated when we present the options to council for consideration uh sometime in June of this year. So you'll, you'll, you'll get to see those differences of what they could have been versus what we're recommending at that point in time. Right now, um, it would be not as accurate as it will be then.
When do we anticipate that?
Sometime in June.
June?
Yes, sir.
And then, so today's vote is just, is, is kind of setting us up for that one, correct?
Today's vote enables the combin-, the combination of the two organizations that will enable that savings to happen into the future.
So what will that June vote be exactly? I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm at this, not my willhouse, so I'm just trying to make sure I'm reading all this.
So in June, we'll bring recommendations for the, for the rates going forward for the next five years for water, wastewater, and solid waste management services.
So today, it's these two combining, and then we'll hear a little bit more about what those rates could have been versus what we anticipate them to be.
Yes, sir.
Right, and, and also, as Chris was saying before, there'll be, there'll be a few other items or just other steps that we have to take to close out OC and combine the two organizations. So it'll come back before council a couple more times. So we'll see some other items that are just other steps, legal steps that we have to take to complete this consolidation, these two legal entities. And so there'll be some additional items that will come between now and like the June-July timeframe.
Just for my own, and again, just thinking transparency here for folk. When OC, when did this come into existence? Could you remind us? Oh, yeah, I know, right? Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to have to give you that answer because I don't, I don't have it uh right on the tip of my tongue right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure of that date either. I'm not, we, we can get that for you, though.
It's been a while.
The, you, Water Utilities Trust has been several decades?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Both of them have been several decades.
Right, okay. Thank you both.
Okay, any other questions for Chris on this item? Hearing none, we could take the Environmental Assistance Trust docket as one vote, items A through C. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Are we waiting on anybody? Okay, Councilman McAtee and Councilwoman Nice, have you voted?
So she's off the screen.
Okay, so Councilwoman Nice is, is off screen, so we'll presume she's essentially left to me. Oh, there she is. Councilman McAtee, are you able to vote? Uh, you're muted, I can't hear you here. You're still muted, Councilman. There we are. Councilman, how do you vote? Okay, got it. All right, is that everybody? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, all right, we'll adjourn Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust and reconvene as the council where we find ourselves on page three of your printed agenda, item seven, the consent docket. I know we have presentations on item AJ. I think maybe city manager was gonna say a word about AX. We have a presentation on AZ. We have a presentation on BA through BE. Presentation on BN. And is that it? Okay, is there anything else a council member wishes to push out, pull out for a separate discussion or separate vote?
Yes, I have AK. Also AM.
Your honor.
Yes.
Just a couple items for discussion, please, or just to hear a little bit more about them. So item AL.
Okay.
And then AS.
Okay.
Yeah, those are the, the two.
Anything else? All right, hearing none, we'll pick those in order then, which means we will begin with a presentation for the city manager or his team on item AJ.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Butler is with us today, our planning director, to talk about this amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff Butler, planning director. If I can give permission to share my screen here, I've got a few slides to share on this comprehensive plan amendment.
I know, we need to change the.
I'll go ahead and just, just run you through the, the presentation here.
We're trying to get that for you, Jeff, but you can go ahead and start.
Okay. So this is located at Hefner Road and Kelly Avenue, so on the southwest corner of that intersection. There is, it's a, it's a entire quarter section of land, not the entire section, but most of it, so it's 140 acres. And the associated zoning application is PUD 1801, it was actually continued today. Looks like I have the ability to share now, so let me go ahead and do that. There we go. So here's the map. Hopefully you can see that now. So the, the area in kind of the pink outline is the employment reserve designation that we're lifting. And as I said, it's PUD 1801, which has been continued. This action would just be receiving the action that was already taken by the planning commission, which was to remove the employment reserve layer shown here right there. And again, it's the kind of the pink outline. So it was designated employment. The planning commission took the action to remove the employment designation from that so that it's now just designated as just kind of standard urban low, which allows a variety of different developments, including residential development. So right now it's just a vacant piece of property surrounded by some other vacant properties, low-density residential mostly, but it's close to the intersection or the interstate rather. Pretty close, so it's got good access. There's the zoning, it's currently zoned R1, which I think was, was a factor in, in the decision. The, the zoning designation or the zoning proposal is to go from R1 to another PUD, which is essentially R1, but allows for a few modifications. So that's just in a nutshell, just really briefly what the proposal is. So here's what the map looks like now. The subject site, as I said, has been changed from employment to urban low. And the, this is just an action, as I said, for the council to receive that change. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What you're saying is R1 with some modifications, right?
Yes.
I guess my question is, is this common as far as for, for this particular area? Do we have other areas throughout our city that are very similar that we can change in addition to this one?
Where we could remove employment designation?
If it's designated R1 already?
There usually for, so the other employment designations, you can kind of see on this map, the, the blue striped areas. Normally there, the base zoning underneath that is AA. There are a few that are zoned R1. So it's, I would say it's, it's fairly rare for this situation to occur where the base zoning is R1. But there are some, some exceptions where that's the case, and this was one of them.
Well, I guess that's where I'm confused. As we're looking at this, I don't understand how it was ever deemed reserve, this employment reserve in the first place, if it's R1, if it's always been R1.
There are, there are some cases in the city where, and a, a good example is back in the old days, I'll just put it that way, when we were annexing large chunks of the city, everything was just brought in as R1. So there are some cases where we have land like this. I don't know if, if that's the case here. But it often is the case where there's what would be rural land is actually zoned R1. So sometimes the, the zoning will vary for undeveloped land, sometimes it's R1, sometimes it's AA. And we did take that into consideration when we did the study to designate employment, you know, what the zoning was. But in some cases where there was R1 zoning, we thought, well, it's, it's a big chunk of undeveloped land, zoning can change. It would be preferred that that would develop as employment as far as, as far as this, the comprehensive plan was concerned, and so that's what it was designated.
Jeff, you, you just speak to my interest. Is that, did I hear that right? That when during the great annexation of the late 50s and 60s, that that was all brought in as R1? And if so, when did that shift to AA? In those parts of?
It was R1 or double A.
Oh, it was either, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kenny.
Yeah, it's a good question. I'm not sure what the, you know, when. I know that a lot of land and, and, you know, we, I haven't, I don't actually have a map of that in front of me, but a lot of land was brought in as R1. I'm not sure when we kind of made that shift of, of bringing it all in as AA. It was, it was quite a while ago. But there still is a lot of land that was brought in like that and still exists as, as rural land that's designated R1 and doesn't have any, any in service, any urban services to speak of.
It was about 60 years ago.
Now, I guess that's just kind of where my concern is for this. I know we're, we're looking at a development that's coming or wanting to rezone this area, and it's just, it's just quite interesting of the timing and how the neighbors are, are very I don't know really how to put it, but you know, they're concerned about what could possibly take place and, and the fact that they understood it to be an employment reserve as well because of the area that is around it is all, it looks like an area that has been developed for commercial use and mixed use for office. So it's already, the surroundings already implement those uses.
Yeah, that's kind of the current land use map. You're right, there's, there's quite a bit of office and, and employment uses nearby just right there on Broadway Extension. And, you know, just right contiguous to the property, it's still kind of some low-density residential, but it is very close to kind of a little cluster of, of employment uses.
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay. Then we will move on to item AK. Councilwoman Nice, you wish to speak to this?
Yes, I just want to thank our Office of Sustainability for applying for this application that we were awarded for. And because we were the only applicant, we were asked if we wanted to request more, and so we did. And we were able to get that. And for those who may be wondering what's happening, this is for the streetscape project as far as some eligible small infrastructure projects include bike racks, shelters, public service repair stations, bicycle pedestrian signage, pedestrian lighting, and bicycle and pedestrian pavement markings. So this is something that has been lacking in this part of our community. So we are gratefully excited about the efforts that will be implemented in this particular area from Northeast Fourth to 23rd, as well as Lottie from, and also from East Madison to North Kelly. So we'll see a lot of great things happening. And hopefully now we'll see a lot, lot more folks on their bikes. And you might just see me on mine, just so I can test it out and see what's going on. So again, thank you to our Office of Sustainability for applying for this particular grant. We are appreciative of that effort.
That's awesome. Good job, Councilwoman in Office of Sustainability. I'll see you on your bike, Councilwoman.
With my helmet, of course.
With your helmet, of course.
All right, now we'll move on to you, Councilman Cooper, for item AL.
Well, as much as I love bike infrastructure, I also love parks and especially been interested in North Rotary Park and the improvements there, as I know the residents are. And I was just kind of curious if we could kind of hear a little bit more. I know North Highland is another one here of interest, probably to the councilwoman, but I'm just kind of curious to hear a little bit more about what's going on at North Rotary, please.
Good afternoon. Good morning. This is Doug Cooper, Parks and Recreation Director. As Councilmember Cooper pointed out, this, this change order, this document involved North Rotary Park and North Highland Park. And ironically, North Rotary actually transcends two wards, Ward One and Ward Two. Some of the change order in, as, as we have seen across the city, as we add walking paths in our parks, it's not just the, the two-legged residents that are using those walking paths, but they are bringing their pets with them. And, and the neighborhood actually requested that we add some dog disposal stations on, on that walking path. So, so that's part of the change order is adding some waste stations. We also always try to make sure that we improve conditions and, and some of that is in drainage within our parks. And most people that use North Rotary know that we have some runoff in that area. So part of that change order has to do with additional flumes to control how that runoff is, is moved through our system and into our stormwater management system citywide. We also had a new picnic shelter, a new gathering place put in North Rotary Park and to make sure that we are compliant with ADA and everything matches up for ADA compliance. We had some additional linear footage of handrails and added to some of the existing sidewalk blocks to make sure that we are ADA compliant. In North Highland Park that you're being asked to consider today. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
If you could repeat all of that, North Highland Park, we missed it.
You cut, you cut out on that when you got in, you're talking about North Highland.
I hope you caught all that because I've just got note of this.
Eric Winger, are you on the line?
I'm your city manager, so Eric Winger, Public Works Director. The change order that's, that Doug was just describing includes some improvements at North Rotary and North Highland. The North Highland is also some ADA improvements. It also includes a, a new dog waste station that was similar to some of the North Rotary Park comments that Cooper was talking about. So the total cost of the change order is $14,881. And we're on track to complete all of the work this summer, summer of 2021. And I can do my best to answer any questions you might have as well.
Director Winger, what, what is the, if you wouldn't mind reminding me, the, where we, with the completion date for North Rotary as well?
So the project was bid to one contractor for all 11 parks, and so I don't have the specific park completion dates, but the entire project, all 11 parks will be complete this summer of 21.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And just for clarification, I understood as far as the purpose on the memorandum that we received in the agenda packet that there were, we only had the, the ADA upgrade to North Highland Park. So I do need to add that we will have dog waste station. I just want clarification to ensure that that is what, we're getting the two improvements and not the one that I, I was told.
But Doug and I sent you an email with all the improvements. I think he had a more comprehensive list, and I don't have the actual change order in front of me. But my understanding was it was, it was drainage, dog waste at both, but let me, let me clarify that for you. I just, I'll do it at the meeting. I, I will get that to you after the meeting.
I appreciate that. And also, as we all know, there's so many different parks that are on here. If there are any other, as far as the other park that's listed for Ward Seven, if there are any updates to it as well, please.
So this change order doesn't include any additional items for EM Sellers Park? So it'll, it'll have whatever was originally bid with the project. Would you like a list of those improvements?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item AM, Councilwoman Nice?
Yes, this is an area that Councilwoman Hammond and I both share. And I understand there were some landscape improvements, and there was also a, a decrease of $5,132.50. So I just would like an update on this project and, and how it came to be and, and where we are as far as the decrees of funds.
Councilwoman, this is Eric Winger again, Public Works Director. And this is actually an amendment and an acceptance of the project, so the work is complete. As you noted, it is a decrease, and it was just to reconcile the final quantities that were not needed on the project. And this is the Oklahoma City Boulevard project. I think if I were to summarize the entire project, it spans from generally Pennsylvania Avenue all the way east into the Bricktown area. It was landscaped in three different sections, and this happens to be the center section that was landscaped. So the, each of the ends, the west end is generally from, from Penn to Western is the first section. This section is the Western to Shields, and then the final section was Shields up to the east side of Bricktown. ODOT constructed the Boulevard project, but the city was responsible for all the landscape improvements. So we bid those improvements separately, and that work has all been completed. And so with your approval today, this will accept that work and put the maintenance bonds into effect. Included trees, irrigation, other beautification enhancements that you'll find along the medians for the length of the Boulevard.
One question I'd have, it looks like the Boulevard landscaping took a pretty hard hit in the freeze. How are we addressing that?
So Public Works staff has already had an assessment completed, and we do have a contract already to restore the trees that were broken during the ice storm. There are approximately 200 trees. There are approximately 200 trees that received significant damage. The estimated cost is about $200,000. That funding is going through the approval process now and our goal would be to have those trees replaced this spring during the planting season.
Off the top of your head, who was the landscaper on the Boulevard project?
I don't, I don't remember. The primary contractor was crossland heavy contractors, but I don't remember who their subcontract was for the actual landscaping.
Get me that. No big hurry. I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item AS, Councilman Cooper. This is Sam.
Yes, if we could hear a little bit of an update on this bridge and trail improvements as it relates to Northwest Expressway and West Willshire, please.
Thank you, Councilman. This is Eric Winger. This is a project that's actually included in our original 2007 bond program, but it's been supplemented with funding also from the 2017 bond. It's a pedestrian crossing over Northwest Expressway near Wilshire. Total estimated project cost is $4.9 million. It does include connectivity to the area trails that are, that are there near Wilshire. The plans are complete and we're wrapping up some of the final land acquisition and easement requirements. The project was originally bid, but it came in significantly over the budget. So it's going through a redesign, which is the need for some of the small changes that are being made and also the additional easements. As we stay on track, we're looking to bid this project again this spring and begin construction this summer. Hopefully that provides enough information, but if there's some questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you for the timeline update. That was helpful.
Okay, then item AX, I know that City Manager just wanted to point that out.
Just wanted to acknowledge that this is the official, receiving the official election returns from the February ninth election where Councilman Stone won the election in Ward Four and then two members, two of the candidates in Ward One and Ward Three, both will move forward to the April sixth election. So congratulations to all of those and to Councilman Stone on his election. Just wanted to recognize that.
Okay, item AZ, you have a presentation?
Yes, this is on, we've been talking about this for a few weeks. This is on the recede of funds on the rental assistance program from the federal government. Aubrey McDermott is with us, our Assistant City Manager. And Teresa Rose Crook is also on the line with Community Foundations of Oklahoma, talking about the new program for the rental assistance program that will be implemented here. This agreement sets forward the ability for us to be able to manage that program through Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. So Aubrey.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen here. Hopefully you can see it. Can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay, great. There we go. So as Craig said, this is, this is a new program that's providing federal assistance for emergency rental assistance for the community. This was delegated through the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021 and its intent is to help households that are unable to pay rent and utilities because of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is going to distribute $25 billion, with a B, nationwide. The state of Oklahoma received about 264 million of those dollars. And also local governments were able to participate in getting direct assistance to them that were over 200,000 in population. So therefore Oklahoma City itself was able to get $19.6 million for us to set up our own rental assistance program. So as these, this contract that is before you today is with the Communities Foundation of Oklahoma and you'll remember that we contracted with them and created the Community Cares Partners Resource Center to administer the city's cares funds from the Coronavirus Relief Fund's Resident Support Program. So even though this is a completely different program, the CFO and Community Cares Partners had already established, you know, the tools and the training and the infrastructure that they needed to administer that program successfully. The full $12.5 million allocation from the Resident Support Program has since been spent, is out in the community and has helped thousands of people in Oklahoma City and that program is now closed out. So our new funds couldn't come at a better time. So this program, since it's the Emergency Rental Support Program, has funds that are administered through other jurisdictions and the state of Oklahoma itself. The CCP is going to be contracting with the state of Oklahoma, also Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County, and potentially Cleveland County. Tulsa and Tulsa County were also direct recipients of funds, but they had their own program similar to how we administered ours. So CFO and CCP will be administering things for several of the different jurisdictions, which creates some efficiencies for Oklahoma City. And the difference between this program and the cares funds is that this is more prescriptive in regard to the use of the funds and the eligibility for households and individuals. This funding is only available for renters. Our previous program allowed homeowners to receive assistance with mortgages. So this will only be for renters in Oklahoma City. Also eligible households have to have someone in their household who is at 80% or less of the area median income to qualify. And then applicants always have to meet basic eligibility criteria showing that their loss of employment or loss of income due to COVID-19 made them unable to pay their rent and utilities and it puts them at risk of housing instability or becoming homeless. So tenants and landlords both can apply for this assistance. It is just for rent, utilities and some other housing expenses. This funding does allow you to pay arrears for rent and utilities back to March 13th of 2020. It also allows you to pay forward prospective rent up to three months so that you can ensure housing stability. And then other types of expenses, like if a household had been displaced due to COVID-19, they can pay relocation costs, fees, late fees and internet services so that people can continue to do distance learning or telework or get telemedicine or receive government services. So one of the stipulations with this funding is that 90% of the funds go directly to people to provide financial assistance. The remaining 10% of funds is used to cover administrative costs. That includes case management and some other housing stability services. Also, the federal government wanted to ensure that the money is getting spent and going out the door. So 65% of the funds must be spent by September 30th. And then the total amount of funds must be spent by the end of the year. And then one of the actions that's on the agenda for this item is to waive the city's procedural guidelines for professional consultant services so we can enter into this contract with the CFO. And some of the reasons that's necessary is so we can launch this program immediately. We have very aggressive deadlines for spending the funds and we know that the Community Cares Partners can hit the ground running. They're staffed, they're trained, they have systems in place to administer this city's program. And they also offer some unique efficiencies because they're administering the program for several other jurisdictions. Right now, what they are able to do is stretch that limited amount of administrative funding because they have one system that they can aggregate their administrative percentage with all those other jurisdictions. People will experience efficiencies because the new online system is a single source application where people can come in and register for eligibility and the system automatically tells them what they're eligible for under the jurisdiction that they live in. And finally CFO has a pending contract with the state of Oklahoma. That includes a subcontract with Legal Aid Services of Oklahoma. And this is to allow for legal representation to tenants and landlords across the state. So if somebody needs that assistance, the CFO's contract with the state can layer on top of what the city's rent and utility assistance can provide. So it provides a lot more efficiency and effectiveness at the administration of the program. And with that, Teresa Rose Crook is also here to answer any questions you might have and I would be happy to entertain any questions as well.
I have a quick question. On that 90-10 split, I assume that's a federal guideline?
Yes.
What do we think the actual split will be on that?
I think it will take the full 10% to administer the program considering all the case management services and legal services and all those other types of costs will be needed to run the program. So I think it probably will end up being very close to the 90-10. And Teresa, if you think any differently and
I'll pipe that. But no, I completely agree, particularly given that under the state contract, we were including the legal assistance component. So I think the aggregation of that 10% is really going to be important to be able to provide the kind of assistance that we really need our residents to have. Just as an exclamation point on Aubrey's statement, we're looking at staffing up to about 130 to 140 kind of frontline people to provide assistance to residents. And you know, that is quite expensive, but we want to try to provide that assistance upfront and then help streamline and prevent a little bit of the bottleneck that we experienced in, we're calling it CCP Round One, CCP Round One that some residents received. So ultimately, we ended up being able to serve almost 80% of those unique applications in Round One. But we're committed to closer to 100% of qualifying applicants in this round and providing services and getting money out the door in a month. That takes manpower, that takes staff, which increases the, the cost of the program. But we believe we've put together a strong budget plan that will, that we can get all of that work done efficiently and provide the assistance to residents.
I have, I just am curious, I know the applications were closed on the website. When will, with this new money, is there a projected date of when they, those applications will reopen and we can announce to folks that, that there's some new money available?
Yes, pending y'all's decision, we will open that application. The application will be open on Monday and court presence will be, will be re-engaged on Monday. And then we'll begin advertising. We want to give ourselves a week of working because it's, it's a, it's almost like a branched tree application that if you answer one question, it kind of sends you in different directions. So we want to make sure that the application and the process works the way that we have built it and intended it to work. So we're giving ourselves a week of practice and then really having a strong advertising push beginning with, on the 15th.
My question to you, when can we look at the staffing aspect of recruitment and beginning that process of employment?
So we, now, a month ago, we have been hiring and training and as people, you know, as people come to us and, and are interested. If you've got somebody that is interested, you can direct them to me or you can direct them to Jenny Bass, Carl at CCP. It's easier to just send them to me and then I'll forward them on.
There's no website, so it has to go through either one of you?
Well, there, we will be reopening. So starting Monday, we'll be reopening the OKC Community Cares website and so they can use that. But as of today and this week, if they just want to email me, it's a little more direct.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a resident who has signed up to speak on this item. Kirsten Willoughby, do we see Miss Willoughby?
Hello.
Hi Kirsten, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes. Thank you.
Absolutely. My name is Kirsten Willoughby, Ward Eight resident at 5101 Northwest 164th Terrace. And I just have a couple of questions. One was actually answered in the presentation, so thank you so much Aubrey for that. And the first part of this question is, you know, what specifically is the need to waive the guideline, the city guidelines for the procedures for professional consultant services to be able to accommodate this distribution of funds? And adding on to that, is it possible that these guidelines need to be updated going forward for exceptions in the event of, you know, these emergencies such as this pandemic? Second part of this would be, I noticed that this is for both landlords and tenants. I wonder if, or what would happen if both a landlord and a tenant from the same property apply for funds? Is that going to allow the property owner, landlord to be paid twice in that instance? And that's really the only questions I have and thank you guys so much for the time. Appreciate it.
And to go to your first question about the guidelines, I think that you kind of hit the nail on the head with what you said. In times like this and emergencies and we need to contract with somebody and waive that whole RFP selection process that could take months to get it going, we can waive that process because we have a qualified, unique situation here with this consultant, having had the experience and the resources to do this and to start as soon as council approves this contract. So in this case, I mean, I think that that's what waivers are intended to be applied to do. And then to your second point, no, that's not possible to happen. And Teresa could probably speak more to this, but the system will not let them double dip, so to speak. CCP also has the ability to track what other types of funding and resources people have taken advantage of. So if there's, you can't have two, two payments being made from federal funds for the same purpose. So if that applicant is in the system and wanting to pay back, for example, rental arrears back to March, but they'd already received funding under the city's Resident Support Program, we would have records showing that they'd already gotten assistance. So I think Teresa, if you need to add anything to that, I think there are a lot of safeguards to prevent people from taking advantage of the system.
Yes, thank you Aubrey. And Ms. Willoughby, great question. Something that we really thought a long time about as we were building the application. But one of the federal regulations line out that if a landlord applies, that the tenant has to be a part of that application. So really they work in concert. It can't be two separate applications with neither knowing what the other one is doing. In addition to that, as Aubrey pointed out, the, our accounting system, as well as our approval process, coordinates by address, coordinates by name of the landlord, their tax ID number, you know, all of those different kind of components to align and ensure that there's not duplicate payments. But thank you, that's a great question and something that we've had our eye on.
Okay.
When do, so I hear that A is when the application portal becomes available and then the following, the 15th is when advertising campaign?
Right.
So would we as council members start promoting this next Monday then?
Yeah, yeah. If you want to go ahead and start telling people that, that the, the application is up and live starting next Monday, that'd be great.
Okay. And this program, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be wrong. It's, it's not related to, let's say I'm a renter, but it's, it's a business. Like I'm renting in a, there's a landlord who owns the building. I'm a business owner within that property. This is not applicable to me, correct?
This is residential.
Just making sure that was clear to everybody. I thought that was the case.
Thank you for clarifying.
Oh, and then the other, I'm sure you all are going to in your marketing campaign, but y'all know I love infographics, so.
I will pass that along in our interviews.
Well, I just think, you know, as I laid on my sofa really late at night when I should have been at bed just looking at memes that brought joy to my life, I just think that that's kind of the world that we're in right now where the sort of box images are what, that's how a lot of people are consuming information these days, you know?
Good point.
Okay. We're done with that item. I believe we are at item BA, the presentation and at BA kind of through BE.
That's right. Yes. So BA through BE are all related to the general obligation bond program. So BA through BE are all related to the general obligation bond program, the first four items BA through BD are going to be dealing with our current bond sale, the current year's bond sale for the 2017 bond authorization. And then BE is on a geo bond refunding, which we do periodically. Brent Bryant, our finance director is on and will give us an update on these items and the amounts of the sales.
Yes, good morning, Brent Bryant, Finance Director. We have a total of five, five items today on today's agenda related to our general obligation bond program, four related to what we call new money issues, and the fifth item allows us to refund approximately $23 million in outstanding 2011 geo bonds. The new money is from the 2017 geo bond authorization that was approved by the voters in December of 2017. We're planning to sell the new money bonds on March 30th, four weeks from today, 2021 as a competitive sell. Upon selling these two issues, we'll have a balance of about $574 million remaining on the initial $968 million authorization, and those bonds will be sold in future years. Items seven BA and BB are related to the $116.6 million general obligation bond sale. And that, these two, BA is a resolution seeking approval to sell by competitive sell, 116 million of tax exempt bonds. And then item seven BB is the ordinance to set for the sale on March 30th of 2021. Just for a frame of reference, last year when we sold our, our tax exempt bonds, our true interest cost is around 2.62%. But we don't know if that's exactly what it'll be this next year, we'll just see next, in four weeks. Item seven BC and seven BD are related to a $30 million gold taxable sale. Again, BC is a resolution seeking your approval to sell by competitive sell the bonds. And then item BD is an ordinance to set for the adoption when we sell the bonds on March 30th, 2021. The last item is item seven BE, it's related to a $23 million geo refunding, and then again, we'll be refunding the outstanding maturities of the 2011 geo bonds through a negotiated sale. Our policy requires a minimum of 3% overall savings in order to do a refunding. We anticipate a present value savings of approximately $3.5 million over the next 10 years. We will not extend the life of the bonds, we'll just refund about the remaining balances there. A resolution approving the, approving and setting the parameters for the refunding will be brought back to you for consideration on March 30th, and then subsequent to that, we will pick a day sometime in April and do a negotiated sale with our underwriters. Now with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brett? Hearing none, we have one more item on the consent docket to discuss, and that is a presentation for our item BN with IMSA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Chief Kelly is on for a day, Richard Kelly is on for a day to speak on this item, and then Jim Winham with IMSA is also on. This is really an agreement that provides us some flexibility in responding to some of the store, the staff challenges that IMSA has been experiencing, they've talked to us about, and so I'll let Chief Kelly and Jim take it from here. So Chief, you, you ready to go?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. Good morning, Mayor and Council, Richard Kelly, Fire Chief, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. And the IMSA service agreement before you today is an example of the collaborative partnership between the Fire Department and IMSA to assure our residents receive high level emergency medical and life-saving responses. Fire and IMSA leadership have been meeting regularly to identify best practices and opportunities to improve these services. During the transition of our ambulance service to IMSA oversight, it became apparent that the number of IMSA paramedics currently servicing the Oklahoma City Metro were lower than optimum. In order to fill this gap, Fire and IMSA leadership developed an agreement to tap into the larger resource pool of over 250 paramedics, fire paramedics that work under the same medical control to assist in this endeavor. Under this agreement, fire paramedics will be called in off duty to work overtime while supporting IMSA and the overall medical response system. The fire paramedics will be acting in the role of a transfer of care medics at the higher user-based hospital systems in Oklahoma City. The transfer of care medic will receive the patient at the hospital and allow the ambulance crew to return to service in a timelier manner to provide ambulance services throughout the city. Under extreme circumstances, fire paramedics can also be utilized to staff and ambulances under the same agreement. Each month, IMSA will then repay the city for the services provided by fire paramedics. I also have Jim Winham here with us, the IMSA President, Chief Executive Officer, to discuss more details of the circumstances of this agreement.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, City Council, appreciate the opportunity. What we have experienced, especially since the pandemic's been going on, is a extreme increase in delays at our local hospitals. I want to say that it's not the hospital's fault whatsoever, often they're just overrun with patients, not only from the pandemic, but the normal day-to-day illnesses and injuries that they see throughout the community. So our delays in this transfer of care of the patients to the hospital, it significantly reduces the number of ambulances available and it puts them out of position. So we have seen in in January of this year, about 517 hours of ambulance time was spent waiting to transfer care to the hospital, they're setting on our cots while the ambulance is out of service. And 600 incidents of these delays were longer than 20 minutes, some of them were up to an hour, and we've even had instances within the last 60 days, three and a half hours, up to four hours, I think the longest was five hours that we've seen. Because these delays frequently occur during our busiest parts of the day, our ambulances are not at their location or post throughout the city, and that extends the response times to the next call. So they may be responding from a hospital downtown, way up north where they should be at an area that's closer to the call, using our predictive analysis that goes on. On average, if we add an additional 7.5 minutes to each call, which increases the ambulance's task time, that increases the number of new units needed to meet the volume. And with just two minutes of average task time, that's equivalent to one full ambulance shift worth of production, or 12 hours lost of one ambulance during any particular shift. What the transfer of care or the TOC medics that our Oklahoma City firefighter colleagues would be doing was, they would assume care at the hospital and allow our ambulances to get back into services much quicker. They would wait with the patient until a bed becomes available, that would be their sole duty, and that would allow our units to not have to wait hours at a time to get a bed at a hospital and put them back in service and put them back in position. Also, this agreement, as Chief Kelly pointed out, in a serious situation such as, you know, a major tornado, major disaster, something along those lines, where the, the system is completely overwhelmed, that would allow us the opportunity to utilize work hand-in-hand with the Fire Department to staff ambulances if necessary in that situation or other things as they come forward. So in a nutshell, that's it, I appreciate it, and we're certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a quick question, actually, it's a two-part question. One is, I would think with our hospitalizations going down, pandemic hospitalizations going down, that we would already kind of be seeing an improvement in this area. And then the other thing I was curious about are the staffing levels at IMSA in comparison to current day to like 12 months ago, just wondering what that looks like. And before you answer, I want to commend both of you for, for working together to try and find a solution to get this resolved, but thanks.
Thank you. Counselor, I'll take the, the first question regarding hospitalizations from the pandemic. Yes, sir, there are, there, we're starting to see that decrease as was discussed earlier today, however, there's still other injuries, illnesses that are still coming into the hospitals, and there is a good chance, and I'm certainly not the expert on this, but I do listen to the experts, of a CDC put out today, the possibility of a fourth wave, et cetera. So a lot of the hospitals are being proactive and maintaining some of those COVID beds, and I'm not, I'm certainly not speaking for the hospitals, but what I understand, they may be empty, but they're still holding on to them as they're seeing, you know, a decrease, sometimes they see an uptick in it, it just varies from day to day. So it's a throughput issue, it's not necessarily the, the emergency department, it's where the emergency department either sends them upstairs to ICU, cardiac, step down, whatever, they may not have the bed, so they end up having to hold these patients in the emergency department until a bed becomes available. And even though they, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50 different ED beds, oftentimes they're full and there's just no room at the end, and we have to wait until someone is discharged, somebody is moved upstairs, until they can find a bed. And that's the purpose of this process would be to allow that ambulance not to have to wait until they can find a bed, will have a system certified credential fire paramedic that has the same protocol, same medical director, which is a unique and great thing for our system, and they would maintain patient care with that particular patient till our folks go out, sir, or allows our folks to go back out onto the streets.
And any idea on the second part of that, any idea?
Yes. When we took over December 1st, it was obvious that the staffing of the previous contractor was too low for the system. It has increased, we've, we've hired well over 60, 70 members since our takeover, but it takes a while to get them out into the streets, they just can't be hired, it's very similar to a fire academy, not as long, very similar to a police academy where they have to go through at least four to five weeks in-house, and then anywhere from two weeks to six weeks actually riding with a field training officer before they're credentialed by our external medical control doctor because of the clinical sophistication. So it takes a while to get those members up and going. Now EMTs, we can do that a little quicker, but paramedics have to get a certain amount of calls because we don't want, you know, we don't want them not understanding or not being able to be appropriately trained. And we're a little different than the Fire Department, they'll have a company officer that can assist with some on-the-job training after they come out of a great academy, we don't have that. So it's a, they come out as a crew chief themselves, so it's just a paramedic and EMT. So that's why the training is extended in the field, so it takes a while to get those numbers back up. But we are seeing an increase, we have, there's an academy in Oklahoma City that's going on right now, that is so big that we were really concerned about trying to keep them separated, so we've had to move it into two rooms and, and, and they'll be going out on the street for field rides starting this Saturday, and there's well over 25 or so individuals that are in that class, sir. So our staffing, 12 months ago, I don't have those numbers on it, our call volume wasn't as high as it is right now, but I can tell you in the council that we are actively increasing our numbers as quickly as we can without doing any shortcuts, and we should see those staffing numbers come up, you know, within the next 30 to 60 to 90 days, sir.
Great, thank you, thanks, Jim.
Yes, sir.
For Winham, Chief Kelly, I want to applaud and recognize what I believe is a really creative solution to a very short-term problem, so my hat's off to you and anybody else involved with the project, tell them I said thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Me, well, I, just a couple things, first, just to echo Councilman Stonecypher there, you know, thank you for, you know, thinking creatively here, how to address this. It again highlights for me why I'm very concerned about, you know, what a fourth, fourth wave could look like in, in later this month, so I really applaud the counselors who, who stood up and passed this mask ordinance today, because this is the stakes that we're talking about, this is, this is real, this is not abstract debates. So I just wanted to say that. What, and I also just, if anyone's watching, you know, I would just really encourage them to, to join you all as, in the, in the Fire Department and IMSA, and I just, I, I think I've always been impressed with, with, with both set of services, and I would just encourage people to, to join your ranks. What can we be doing on that note to, to help? It sounds like, like you said, that most recent class is, is quite promising in terms of its size, what can, is there anything at the council level we can be doing to help promote the two services?
Well, Counselor, Jim Winham here, we, we are looking, well, we are going to do it, we just haven't started the process yet, where we will take individual citizens that want to join, and we will actually pay them to go to EMT school. And they, the school is free, they will get paid while they're going to school, it may be like an eight to five plus clinicals, and then provide them an opportunity to start within our organization, you know, work as long as they want to as that, then they have the opportunity to go through our in-house paramedic school, which is also free, so it's an opportunity for individuals that may not have the ability to go to school, that want to get into this process and become an EMT paramedic and eventually bridge over to become an RN or go to PA school or, or to become a firefighter. You know, we encourage that, if they have other, you know, aspirations, but they'd like to get some experience in a very highly clinically sophisticated system, this is a great opportunity for them. So our diversity officer, Mr. Hill, Chief Hill will be out very soon, and we will be looking at anyone that wants to apply for this, and we'll probably have a class of around 18 to 20 to start with of the individuals that want to go through that. So in answer to your question, you know, if we can spread that word around, if folks are interested in that, then we will certainly get them signed up, and depending on how well this works out, we'll most likely have additional classes that go forward. Because we get the opportunity to train them through our school, through our medical director, through our system, and they learn the Oklahoma City system, and they learn the, the protocols and the ability to, to function in this city as opposed to a generalized school, so it works out quite well, sir.
I think that's incredible, where is this information? I'm happy to share it.
It, I will get it to you and any other counselor that wants to go forward with it, I'll have Chief Hill get with you, we are just now putting it together, it's been in the talking, we're in the works for about two months now, and we're getting down to the point where we can actually either go in with a school or teach it onsite for us, so that's the point where we're at right now, probably be at one of the Oklahoma City schools that do that, we just haven't decided or haven't put a bid out for that yet, sir.
City Manager Freeman, is this, as we do receive that information, is this something that our Public Information Office could put out as a press release as well? I'm just trying to think how to, I just think that is a wonderful thing I just heard.
Sure, sure, we can work with them on getting some information out and helping get that out through our system as well.
Cool, thank you, thank you so much.
Chief Kelly, do you have something to add on that?
Yeah.
I do, yes, sir. Councilman Cooper, thanks again for your support in that, and, and I'll just tell you already, the council helps fire and public safety in so many ways by supporting us, I think is our constituency, the great support that you provide, but we also have a recruitment office that is actively recruiting, we have a phone number, 297-FIRE, you can also go to the OKC.gov website, and then we have a recruitment page on our, our fire website, we encourage to send individuals to that, and our recruitment officers will actually reach out to them, sit down with them individually, you know, we really want to inspire those You know, we really want to in, inspire those individuals that are interested in the fire service or any type of public safety to reach out. So anything you can do there. But we also, we, we partner with the fifth quarter, which is our fifth quarter organization that actually we actively recruit on the northeast side and all throughout the city to try to find minorities that are interested in the fire service. And we really, it's a collaborative effort, we need all hands on deck when we do that. We recognize that we have fire professionals that, you know, are really excited about doing that. But anytime you have individuals such as yourself or any one of our, our constituents out within, you know, the city, if they have people that they think are great people of character that want to give back to their community, they can reach out and, and contact us in those ways. So we really appreciate that support.
Well, and it's because we appreciate your service, so we'll definitely, I'll talk to council staff about ways that we can help promote, promote this for sure. And I just really appreciate you and Jim, and again, please pass that along to your, to your people.
There's no other comments on that item. We have a resident who signed up to speak on an earlier item on the consent docket. As everyone knows, the planning cases are introduced under the consent docket. And I don't recall ever having anyone speak on those items at this time because there is a hearing obviously that follows. And that hearing is noticed and all parties that are affected know to come for that hearing. We do have someone who signed up to speak on a, on a zoning item that is, is being introduced today. The final hearing would be March thirtieth, and that is item X. And we did explain to the resident that this is not the hearing and that we would really, I'm sorry, in this case, it's actually April thirteenth is the final hearing. And that it wouldn't be appropriate for anyone really to respond because the applicant is not here and was not, you know, was not asked to be here. But they, they were insistent that they do speak. And so of course, again, this actually item will be considered by the council in a full hearing on April thirteenth. But is Michael W. Smith on the line? He is there though, okay, Mr. Smith, if you would push star six, okay, there, we can, we can hear you. If you would state your name, address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less, thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm Michael W. Smith with United Methodist Church of Good Shepherd, residing at fifteenth, southwest fifteenth and Sarah Road. I had my, today I was going to go ahead and postpone my request for two weeks at the next meeting. But I'll, I'll go ahead and underscore it by making a brief statement right now that we're, we're going to request a continuance at that time because we feel that the applicant has not really sort of noticed all the considerations that need to be around this, this property. And most of it's going to be relating to drainage and safety. And we, we recite our property is immediately adjacent to the, this planned development. And in between our properties is a FEMA restricted area. And they have, we also have a restricted area on the south side being Mustang Creek itself. We've had recent floodings that have been within two feet of our twenty-five hundred square foot church. And it's happening more often ever since the turnpike was built. The offsetting development right now is full of trees and grasses and stuff. So it's serving as a place right now where a fifty some acres is slowing down the water before it reaches the adjacent tributaries and the Mustang Creek itself. Putting in the R two and R one concrete features roofs and so forth in there is going to greatly enhance not only the volume collection, but the rate that that water is released from that property and our property, our church's property is next door. And as we said, we were within two feet of flooding here this last summer. Any more water coming onto that property will definitely put our church underwater. Addition to that is the safety of the children that are walking through this planned this planned community. And that is that the, there is no, there's no connectivity between one part to the other. And there's a school on the north side and, and the, the housing is on the south side. They right now would have to go up Sarah Road, which is the road that gets flooded all the time. Another comment on the Sarah, on the Sarah side, Sarah Road side is that the two entrances for this planned development are going to be over there. And, and right now they're perfectly located to be underwater often because it is right now. The, and also the, the FEMA study that was done in two thousand eight, just about two years before the Lightning Creek disaster, is still the reference that we're using today.
Mr. Smith, you have thirty seconds remaining.
Thirty seconds, good, is still the, the standard that we're using to identify flooding in the area, which is inaccurate for, to give developers as they move forward to, to prevent other people being flooded. And the last but not least is that Mustang Creek is considered a, an impaired water body. That is, it's polluted, it's, it's been noted, it has E. coli is in this system, so we have to be looking.
Okay, so we'll have six weeks for him to hopefully work through those issues with the applicant and, and with the council member from that ward. And it will again be a full hearing, that, that we don't, we wanted to let him speak because he signed up, but honestly, that, that was really not the, not the time or place. We'll, we'll have a full hearing on April thirteenth. Okay, that concludes everything on a very lengthy consent docket today and we can now take a motion. We've got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. That brings us to the concurrent docket, item eight, page nine on your printed agenda. No scheduled presentations, so we can, we can take that with one motion if everyone would be agreeable to that, item Z three P. We've got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item nine is items requiring separate votes. And we're going to start with what, what looks to me like the longest planning docket I've ever seen as mayor in three years. So we have got a long road ahead of us today. All right, we will begin with item nine A. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended, that was recommended for approval at the planning commission. It is at one seven six zero zero southeast fifty ninth street going from double A to R A, Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No.
Thank you, this did receive unanimous approval at the planning commission, so unless anyone has any questions on it, I would like to move it forward, recommended approval.
All right, we've got a motion. Waiting for a second, got a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine B is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at one two one zero six Penny Drive going from R one to PUD one seven nine six, Councilman Stone Cypher.
Thank you, Mayor, as you noted, it's an ordinance on final hearing to rezone twelve one zero six Penny Drive from R one single family residential to PUD known as a planned unit development known as seventeen ninety six. It went before the planning commission, it was approved, there are no known protesters at this time, I'd move for its approval.
All right, got a motion, we got a second, there it is, cast your votes. We're waiting on, Councilman Greenwell, have you voted? Passed unanimously. All right, item nine C is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at three oh one East Britton Road going from R one to PUD seventeen ninety seven, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, the purpose of this request is to permit a mixed office and commercial development. And there were no protesters present, has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
With that, I will move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion in a second, cast your votes. Councilman McAtee, have you voted yet? All right, passed unanimously. Okay, now we have item nine D, this is ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. This is at one one zero one South Morgan Road going from C three to PUD one seven nine nine, Councilman McAtee, back to you. Oh, and Councilman McAtee, the applicant is here if, if you wish to hear from him. You are muted, Councilman. A mayor. Go ahead. Okay, is Dax Taylor on the line?
Mr. Mayor, it's David Box, five twenty four drive, I, I am the applicant.
Uh, maybe that's just my inability to read some handwriting, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly take your word for it, David, go ahead.
So me on behalf of the applicant, also Tim Johnson and Mark Zitzel. So this is approximately six acres for a multifamily development along Morgan Road just south of I forty. You can see the existing PUD to the west is an existing multifamily project, this is the same developer, it's simply an extension of that. This area of the city is changing rapidly with the turnpike, that with all of the interchanges over in the southwest part of the city. Again, proximity to I forty, proximity to all the commercial that exists in the area. It was recommended for approval by staff, two TEs, both of which we agreed to. And it was unanimously recommended for approval by the planning commission and there was no protest at the planning commission.
David, there are several PUDs being considered in that general area. This is not the one that has elicited quite a bit of protest and discussion. As you say, this one here has no protest?
Correct, the, we actually heard the protests in the, the introduction of an item just a few moments ago. So you got a sneak preview of what you'll get to hear April thirteenth, so no, no protest on this one.
So this one is different and with no protest. Unless the council has any questions, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion, waiting on a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, all right. Item E was deferred, which brings us to item F. And I understand Councilman Stone is going to carry this for Councilman Griner. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at nine seven four nine Northwest Expressway going from C three to PUD one eight zero two. And Councilman Stone, the applicant is on the line.
But, Your Honor, just one second, I think I'm gonna have to recuse from this, this is item nine F, correct?
Correct.
I, I need to recuse.
Okay, just turn off your screen then and don't vote. Thank you, Councilman Stone, did you want to hear from the applicant?
No, I, I believe I'm good, has anyone signed up to speak on this?
No, I have not.
Thanks, this is another item received unanimous approval at the planning commission with no protest, no protest currently. So I would move for its approval.
All right, we've got a motion, waiting on a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, okay. Thank you, Councilman Stone, all right, we're at nine G, this is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at thirty three oh three Northeast twenty third going from PUD one five five eight to PUD eighteen oh three. Councilwoman Nice, it does not appear anyone has signed up to speak.
Thank you, this application is to request a permit for mixed use development. And this part of our, our area of twenty third street surely needs some development. So with that, I'm going to move for approval.
Right, got a motion, waiting on a second, cast your votes. Pass, passes unanimously. Nine H, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at fifty four oh one West Memorial Road going from PUD one four four six to PUD eighteen oh four, Councilman Stone Cypher. And you are muted, Councilman.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, this rezoning went before the planning commission on January fourteenth, twenty twenty one, it was recommended for approval. There are no protesting parties to my knowledge, so at this time I would move for the item's approval.
All right, we have a motion, waiting in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. All right, item I was previously deferred and that brings us to item nine J. Ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at one three six zero zero Southwestern Avenue going from S P U D six two eight to S P U D one two seven five, Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor, this particular item is requesting a permit for modified use. It runs along Southwestern Avenue, certainly all of the area of Southwestern, north of one hundred and thirty fourth street, which is a state highway, has pretty well been identified as commercial. Now we're extending that south, no protest, approved unanimously, I would recommend approval.
All right, that's a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, item nine K, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at eight twenty Southwest one hundred and thirty fourth street going from double A and C three to S P U D one two seven six, staying with you, Councilman Greenwell.
Yes, this is a similar item, they're just around the corner from each other, again, requesting modified commercial use. There are no protesters, was approved unanimously by the planning commission, I would recommend approval, please.
All right, we've got a motion, waiting on a second, there it is, let's cast our votes. Passed unanimously. All right, nine L is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at twelve hundred South Meridian going from I one to S P U D one two seven nine, Councilman McAtee.
Hi, yes, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, David Box, five twenty two Call Core Drive.
David, if you would, explain to the council what the uniqueness of this is and what the potential for future growth is.
Yeah, so this is an existing hotel site that has long been a, a problem. with crime and other issues. It's now vacant. My client is seeking to purchase this and convert it to a multifamily project. In the packet, if you look through this item, you would have seen a letter of support from the Oakland City Hotel Association. It's their belief that removing this property from the list of hotels on Meridian is actually a positive thing, and injecting full-time residents in the area will be a positive thing for the restaurants and the retail and all the other commercial-type businesses that exist along Meridian there. So it was met with a recommendation for approval by staff, as well as a recommendation for approval by planning commission. And there are no known protests that I'm aware of. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Unless the council has some questions, I heartily endorse this. It is, as David said, been a challenge to do some redevelopment work on it. There's a plan out to really turn it into a first-class apartment complex and solve some problems in the Meridia and I-40 area. So unless the council has some objections, I move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion. Waiting on a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item 9M. This is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 17121 Southeast 59th Street, going from AA to SPOD 1280. Councilman Stone, we don't seem to have anyone who's signed up.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this is just a simple lot split out on Southeast 59th. Again, unanimous approval by the planning commission. So with that, I would recommend a go-ahead motion for its approval.
I've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9N, ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1216 and 1218 Northwestern, going from C4 to SPOD 1281. Councilwoman Hammond.
Thank you. This proposal would provide mixed office and residential use. I believe the main change will be, because there currently are some office and studio gallery type of businesses there, but it would provide a residential use to allow some live-work units. So I will move for approval when it comes up on the screen.
All right, got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9O, this is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 1127 Northwest 56th Street, going from R1 to SPOD 1247. Councilman Cooper, this is an item. This is the item that Dax Taylor signed up to speak as the applicant, if necessary.
I was gonna say earlier, I didn't want to interrupt your flow there. I was like, I think Dax will be with us in just a bit. In fact, Dax, would you mind, I'm guessing you do want to speak to this. Would you mind kind of telling us what you're up to here, and then I'll have a follow-up, please?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, Dax Taylor, 3000 West Memorial Road, Suite 123-104. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Mainly, firstly, wanted to give a shout-out and a special thanks to everybody that I worked with on this SPOD. This is the first one for our development group, and had a lot of assistance from planning staff, councilperson Cooper, Commissioner Powers, and especially the president of the Neighborhood Association, Rob Littlefield. We are taking a dilapidated house and demoing it and building two residences on the lot. There's been a few spuds that are similar in this neighborhood. And just wanted to thank everybody for the open communication. We took a neighborhood acceptance approach on this SPOD and began working with the neighborhood early on to draft our application. And really thought that was a great way to approach it, and worked very well, made everybody happy upfront. So just wanted to give a special thanks to everybody for their assistance.
That's a good segue into my follow-up. Would you mind, you don't have to, you know, rewrite the odyssey for us here, but just kind of tell us, like, you mentioned this sort of neighborhood approach that you took. Like, what approach did you take with this? I just thought this was really fascinating to me.
Sure. So this neighborhood is Meadowbrook Acres. It's a very unique and special neighborhood in the fact that there are several rezoned lots and several different types of residents in the neighborhood. But it also, as I learned from Rob Littlefield, the president of the Neighborhood Association, also a commissioner with the city, it's got a pretty rich and unique history. And so just driving right into the neighborhood, you can see that it's a special place. And we wanted to respect that aspect of the neighborhood by speaking to several of the neighbors before launching into our plan of development and just learn a little bit about how the neighborhood came to be, how it was, and what the current residents were looking for, that were long-term residents, and how we could accommodate some of those wishes while still, of course, accomplishing our goals. And so we got a lot of assistance by taking that approach, because the neighborhood is very encouraged by these developments. They had seen several of them come through, and were happy to work with us, and we were happy to reciprocate that.
I just, I don't know what's to come for you, and maybe you'll take a completely different path, and I won't like it. But I have to tell you, the approach you all took here, I believe strongly should be the approach to development in this city. It is commendable, the way that without prompting from the government, you attended city council meetings, you saw where things got contentious in some of these zoning cases, and you took notes. And you then went out and you spoke with the existing Neighborhood Association, you spoke with the neighbors particularly, and you listened to them, and then you shared your perspective. And that is so missing, I'm gonna have to tell. It's not always missing, but it's missing too often in these conversations. And then all of a sudden, we have this contentious back and forth on council. And I just cannot commend you enough and your team for the approach you took here, particularly as it relates to our urban core, where there is a lot of anxiety, particularly as it relates to, and normally I would just be completely against it, but, you know, demoing a building. But because you worked with the neighbors and heard their concerns and their hopes for their neighborhood, which were precisely the two questions I always asked, that is just such a respectable and respectful approach. And I would hope that any developer and any of their legal team that's watching hear the humanity in your approach, because you'll notice not a single one of those neighbors is here to protest today. And I just, it is wonderful to see you working with the neighbors, working with the traffic commissioner, to hear those kind of traffic concerns and pedestrian concerns, and to hear you working with our planning commissioner, too. Again, all on your own accord. That is just wonderful. That is, that's how it should work. And I will always hold up this example as what it should be. So thank you, Dax. And with that, I would move for approval.
Okay, we've got a motion. Waiting on a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 9P is ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 2800 Northwest Grand Boulevard, going from PUD 478 to SPOD 1283. Staying with you, Councilman Cooper. And we do have a protester who has signed up to speak.
I heard. Well, you know, let's hear from the applicant first, so we can get an understanding of what they intend this to be. I'd also be very curious to hear from the applicant, kind of just building on my conversation with our good friend Dax there, whom I never knew until that previous development. I'd like to hear what this, what we're intending to do, what's the process been like, and then I'll probably have some follow-ups there, and of course, want to hear from our protesting friend as well.
Sure. David Box, 522 Call Court Drive. So this site is currently zoned in a PUD that limits the ability of the property to only be a single use, and not just a single-use unit, but a single use. It limits it to a bank only. It's been a bank for some time. The bank has gone out. And in an effort to be able to market this property to a broader range of potential tenants or potential buyers, it became necessary to rezone the property. The SPOD that we seek only allows nine different use units. So it's a spud that is a base of commercial, but within that, we prohibit all uses except for nine uses, all of which are low-intensity office-type uses. It's been a bank. It's likely going to be some, you know, professional office similar to that moving forward. There was a protest at Planning Commission. The individual that owns the property that's on the bottom of your screen, but in, to the south has a site that is zoned straight C3. So under C3, just for reference, the zoning code would allow 68 uses by right. Again, our spud seeks the ability to have nine uses. There is some residential folks to the north. That is, what you see on your screen is PUD 74. It is a development known as the Commons. Those folks, as of last week, had a representative who happens to be a lawyer that also lives there ask for three additional items as concessions that would get the residential folks that live there on board. Those three items were no access onto Grand Boulevard, limit any redevelopment of the site to two stories in height, and eliminate two uses within the uses we have within the spud, and that is eliminate all marijuana uses and eliminate all tattoo parlors. My client was agreeable to those. We modified the SPOD, sent it to the neighbors. The neighbors then responded to Boyd that they were good now with the changes. It is compatible with the comp plan. The protester that you have on the line is an attorney that represents the folks that own the property that you see on the screen as, again, C3. You're going to hear a discussion that is going to attempt to confuse the issue before you and get this into a discussion of private covenants that exist on the site. So I want to do my best to focus our discussion on what's before you is an SPOD. The person protesting has 68 uses permitted by right, including all of the uses that we seek, including the ones that he shared a concern, that being marijuana and tattoo parlors, which we have now agreed to eliminate. So all of the residential folks that live in the area through their attorney are satisfied with the changes that I went through. The private covenant matter has absolutely no relevance whatsoever to the discussion that we are having here today, but I don't want you to take my word for it. I see Ms. Carpenter and I believe Ms. Randall from the municipal councillor's office. So I would suggest perhaps ask them and not take my word for it. What's before you is a zoning case, nothing more. And objectively looking at the zoning case with the protestant owning the property that is zoned C3 and far more intense than what we seek, it's hard for me to find an objective way to say what we are doing would create problems. Again, given that the residential folks are now in support of our application. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mayor, you were gonna say something. I could see it.
I'm just always ready. But no, no, no. If you want to keep guiding the discussion, feel free.
Now, let's hear from our, whoever signed up to protest, please.
Okay, so that is Kelly Work. Kelly, are you on the line?
Yes, yes, I am, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Kelly Work, and I am representing HTC Realty LLC, which is the owner of the commercial properties that are located on three sides of this subject property. I do want to mention that I was engaged after the planning commission hearing by the HTC Realty Company. The planning commission did not hear the history and didn't have the benefit of the history of the existing PUD on the property. So I want to share some of that information with you. HTC Realty owns the piece of property that is immediately to the east across Berkeley, to the south across Country Club Drive, and immediately adjacent to the west, adjoining the, what was the bank property. The building that houses the Starbucks to the west, further to the west, is actually owned by someone else. These commercial tracts were platted together as the Country Club Shopping Center in 1948. By the, they were developed by the G.A. Nichols Company. At that time, the area that is the subject property was designated and dedicated as a public parking area. So that continued in that status. It was dedicated as public parking, the subject property was, from 1948 until 1994. In 1994, then, there was a proposal made to vacate that portion of the public parking area and develop the property. And there was an agreement that was made at that time in connection with the vacation of the public parking area and the proposed development that the use of that property would be limited to a bank. Of course, it was going to have a significant impact on the balance of the shopping center, because it was proposing to develop a portion of the parking that was devoted to the shopping center. So PUD 478 was approved in 1994, and as agreed, it limited the permitted use to a bank in accordance with the agreement. In 1997, when this applicant acquired ownership of the bank tract, in an effort to protect the bank from the rest of the shopping center, there was a document that was recorded that requires that if a bank is to be located in any any other part of the shopping center, that they, there would have to get approval from this owner, from the subject property. We don't want to be subject to that restriction. If the bank is no longer going to be there, and as Mr. Box said, the bank is gone, we raised that issue with Mr. Box and his client, and they said that if we wanted to offer consideration, they would consider that. And I'm afraid, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna need to request an additional 30 seconds.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. On a planning hearing, that's a little different animal, and no, you're fine. Continue, Mr. Work. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So we did raise that issue with Mr. Box, that we, with the bank being gone, that there didn't, there was no longer a purpose to be served by a restriction on our portions of the shopping center that required that we get consent from Mr. Box's client in order to put a bank on our property. And again, the response that we received to that request was, were we proposing to pay consideration to them in connection with that request? So if, if the expectation is that we are going to have to bring out our checkbook to write a check to the applicant, then we want to keep PUD 478 in place as agreed back in 1994. Now, what we had suggested to Mr. Box is that we postpone this hearing and allow some additional time for these parties to meet and discuss and to see if we can resolve these issues. But it's important to consider that this was a negotiated PUD back in 1994, and I understand it's been 27 years ago, but the shopping center is still there. The reasons for the agreement are still in place. We understand the bank is now gone, and that if there, and that there is a desire to open up the property to additional uses as this SPOD. as this S P U D would do. If that's the case, then we don't want to be subject to a restriction that we could not have a bank or other financial institution on our portions of the shopping center without getting the written consent of Mr. Box's client. So with that, we would ask, I mean, our suggestion would be to the council that you defer taking action on this S P U D that would rewrite or undo P U D four seventy eight and allow the parties additional time to see if we can resolve our differences. We feel confident that we could if we were ha- if we have that opportunity and we're ready and willing to do that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor Matt.
I'm sure. Go ahead, David.
Um, so i- in terms of when Mr. Work got involved, I received an email on January twenty fifth from who is the broker that Mr. Work is working with. So on January twenty fifth, I was advised that Mr. Work has already been engaged and is working on the covenant issue. Um, I think you should focus on everything you heard from Mr. Work, didn't actually focus on the S P U D that's before you. I've asked time and time again to share concerns with the actual application before you and have yet to hear any concerns. So Mr. Work has been engaged since mid-January. Um, and it wasn't until Friday of last week um that he asked for a continuance. I have advised him and I I told him as late as last night about ten o'clock at night. My client stands ready, willing and able to sit down to talk about whether or not it makes sense to renegotiate the covenant. That has no bearing on this particular item, but my client is willing to do so. But the covenant is a private contract. And he wants out of certain obligations that he agreed to in this contract. Perhaps my client doesn't care. But that is a conversation that needs to be had outside the confines of this discussion because, of course, the problem is the city is not a party to those covenants. So it has no relevance to this zoning application. Your analysis is, is it compatible with the area? Is it compatible with the conference of plan? And of course, the answer to both of those i- is yes. And so this idea that we should continue a zoning case to go give them leverage to go negotiate out of contractual obligations that they agreed to at some point in the past uh would would surely set a very dangerous precedent.
Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that that's what I'm trying to wrap my mind around. You referred to an agreement. What do you see as the role? And this is not a rhetorical question. It's a it's a true and honest question. What do you see as the role of the council in enforcing agreements that uh from from our perspective are almost like a gentleman's agreement, you know? How do we? How do we? What? How do we enforce that? And are we really empowered to do so in your opinion?
Well, I want to clarify one thing. My client was not a party to an agreement with respect to the covenant. My client acquired title to the property later after the uh the uh restriction that has been referred to that imposes this requirement for consent from the owner of the subject property to place a bank on it. That was in the record when my client acquired the property. But with respect to the agreement about the P U D, there that was, there was an agreement and it's evidenced by the terms of the P U D. The P U D that was approved back in nineteen ninety four provides in very specific detail that the use will be limited to a bank with drive-through facilities. It talks about the size of the building. It talks about the hours of operation. Uh, has other provisions in there. That was a negotiated agreement. But because it was going to have significant impact on the rest of the shopping center. So that agreement was made back in nineteen ninety four, and all I'm suggesting is, is that if so now the council is being asked to rezone the property to a different set of use regulations that's going to open it up to a range of uses. It's clearly going to have an impact on uh my client's commercial center. Uh, they propose to just open it up to general retail uses, new buildings to be constructed, potentially personal service uses, convenience, sales and services. So it's going to have an impact on our property. Uh, all we're saying is, is that if that's, if if there is going to be a a change made, there's no purpose to to permit other development and it's no longer going to be restricted to a bank as was done under the E U D four seven eight. Then we shouldn't be subject to a restriction that that limits us from being able to use our property for a bank without getting the written written consent of the owner of the subject property. The bank, as Mr. Box pointed out, is gone. So we raised that issue, as I mentioned with them, and they their their observation was, well, are we offering consideration for that? So so that here we are uh now. Uh, so under those circumstances, we are opposed to the change to P U D four seventy eight, which was a negotiated E U D, albeit twenty seven years ago. It's it's still in place today.
This is Mark Stone Cypher here. Kenny, Amanda, can you answer this question for me? Once the covenants are filed of record, they run with the land. And in other words, they're they're binding on subsequent purchasers of the property, correct?
Correct, correct. When you look at when when Kelly's client bought the property, he took it subject to that covenant.
Juxtapose the covenants beside an application to rezone. That's like comparing apples to oranges, isn't it? I mean, they're not intertwined. They're not one in the same.
It's really not relevant at all.
Yeah, Councilman Stone Cypher, could I address something in response to your question?
Kelly, go ahead.
The the covenants that we're talking about are not covenants that were recorded in connection with the plating of this property. Those those were done back in nineteen forty eight. So the the declaration that was recorded in nineteen ninety seven was just two, the two property owners that owned the property. So it was an agreement between them about the property now. So there, I think there's a question there about whether or not the two owners of the property can impose a covenant that would be binding on all future owners, the history of time. Rather than just be binding on the two of them together. But nevertheless, it it is in the record and it purports to require this written permission from um from from us before we can put a bank on our property.
And that actually would require a lawsuit between David or between Kelly's client and David's client to determine whether or not it was a valid covenant running with the land. It's really not related to the city's land use decisions.
My suggestion, my suggestion, just one final point to you all is that you know, you encourage parties when these P U Ds come in through the application process to work together to try to reach agreements, to negotiate the terms of the P U D. That's what was done with respect to this application back in nineteen ninety four. The circumstances are no different today, even though twenty seven years have gone by. So we would ask you to honor that um that um obligation that was made back in nineteen ninety four with the approval of P U D four seventy eight.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond real, real briefly?
Yes, of course.
I I would submit that we have, um, as I mentioned, Kelly's been engaged since mid-January. I have asked him countless times. I know that Oklahoma City staff has asked him several times. What are your specific concerns as they relate to the the actual application, the S P U D? And we have heard nothing. The only concerns that have been raised to us were marijuana, height of the building, tattoo parlors and access on to grand. And when those concerns were raised, it took my client exactly fifteen seconds to say, we agree, we will limit those and do whatever it is to make the neighbors happy. So we have worked with the neighbors, which is why you had an email from uh Don Navard uh expressing his support for the application because of the concessions that were made by my client. So I would submit that we have uh engaged with the neighbors. Any neighbor that was willing to give us what their concerns were, we have done so, which is why we now have a negotiated spud that the residential folks who actually live there are in agreement with.
Well, I'd just like to make offer a comment just in response to Mr. Box's comments. They in Mr. Box and his clients made no effort to to uh to engage with the with the H T C Realty to contact them to let them know they were proposing to make this change to the P U D to reached out to them about what the issues were would that would be considered. Uh, they just filed the application and then sat back and waited. And then as as I, as I mentioned, I mean, I was engaged after the planning commission. And then it took us some significant period of time to go back and piece together the history from nineteen ninety four uh to be in a position to respond on an ed- on an educated basis.
I I spoke to um the president of H T C Realty myself uh in a lengthy phone conversation on January the fourteenth. Uh, the date of the planning commission and the stated concern to me was the inclusion of marijuana, which we have now eliminated. So we did speak to H T C Realty.
Like, it's like playing pong, huh? You just get the the thing just keeps going back and forth. Fascinating, huh? Um, so um I guess first, um do any of the other council members have a perspective on this? I I I'm curious, especially uh Councilman Stone Cypher, when you asked your question, I I'm just kind of curious because you you've been at this a little bit longer than I have. So I'm just curious to hear if anybody else has any perspective on this. Um, can someone answer for me why this was restricted? Well, I just have two questions. Why this site was restricted to a bank in the first place? That that's my first question.
I don't know. My client didn't own it back um in nineteen ninety four or nineteen ninety four when it was zoned. Uh, and I don't know that Mr. Worth's client owned it back then. I don't know the specifics as to why um a P U D from nineteen ninety four contained what it contained. All I can tell you is certainly things have changed since nineteen ninety four. Development patterns have changed. Conference of plans have changed. Uh, but I don't know exactly why that in that time period this agreement was reached.
I can tell you, Councilman Cooper, that from what I have learned from my research into the history of the development. It was a, it was in recognition of the significant change that was being made from the situation as it has existed from nineteen forty eight until nineteen ninety four. That this area, the subject property, had been designated as quote, public parking. It was actually dedicated to the public. That is not done uh anymore, I don't believe, but it back in nineteen forty eight, it was not uncommon that they would, it would be a commercial development as this was platted to be with the area for parking dedicated to the public. So that continued to be the case from nineteen forty eight until nineteen ninety four. And then in nineteen ninety four, there was a proposal made to do a development of a portion of the property. And what that required was that there would have to be a vacation of that portion of the dedicated public parking area. So in the, over the course of the negotiation, of course, that required notice and hearing and actually a a proceeding before the Oklahoma County District Court, which then ordered the vacation. But in connection with that, there there was a negotiated agreement that the use would be limited to a bank. And uh, and that would then minimize the impact on the rest of the shopping center, which was having, losing a portion of its dedicated parking. So that's my understanding of what the purpose was back in um in nineteen ninety four when it was, when it was approved. And of course, the bank operated there until uh within the last uh seventeen months or so. When it left and went away, and now the applicant is seeking to expand the uses. So if there, if the applicant is going to expect us to write him a check, then we want to keep P U D four seventy eight as it is.
David, you're shaking your head.
I I I never said, Kelly likes to keep saying that. I I never said, uh, you need to write us a check. Again, Kelly is blurring the issues of zoning and covenants. His client is in the position of having a bargain for exchange, just like mine is. And what I said is, what is your offer? What is your consideration? If we're going to revise a contract, um, contracts to revise them usually require both parties to come to a meeting of the minds and and give something up. Uh, but again, that doesn't have any relevance to this discussion. And so Kelly is guessing at what what the agreement and why the agreement was reached in nineteen ninety four, because this client was not in a position of ownership at that time.
Uh, just from the research that I've done, that's what I've been able to determine. And um, and if the council moves forward today and approves this P U D without requiring or allowing the private parties an opportunity to uh try to work it out, well, then you're going to take away any leverage that we would have as an adjoining property owner. And that's what Mr. Box is seeking to accomplish today.
James, this is Mark.
Hi, Councilman.
Ignoring you, I was just trying to choose my words carefully because this could end up at the courthouse. And the one thing I would say to you is that uh I'm relying upon what Kenny said.
I had a feeling you might say that. Um, and so I just have a final question and then um and then a com- a comment. So Kenny, oh, what guidance would you offer here? It sounds like we're pretty you you've already kind of uh issued it as saying, well, I'll just ask that question.
You ought to, you should be uh in approving or disapproving the proposed rezoning, just go by the land use considerations. And I mean, a pri- a covenant, a private contract between two parties. I I don't know why Kelly's client would have agreed that they would never put a bank on their property. But it's it's not relevant now. You just have to look at the existing land uses out there and determine whether or not the proposed rezoning is or is not appropriate on the basis of the land use.
Thank you, Kenny. And then my comments are to say, uh, you know, thank you to the resident who reached out to me who lived nearby. The three things that they brought up uh were um the three things I heard earlier. Uh, they were concerned about marijuana use. Uh, they were concerned about the the height being three feet or three three, three stories. Um, and they were concerned about um people uh turning off of um, you know, North Grand onto into the development. In addition to the already uh turn that's there. So for me, the most concerning is North Grand because, you know, I've been up in that area very recently uh working on revisions for Bike Walk OKC. And I've been paying a lot of attention to the pedestrian priority area uh that's in that area. I've been paying a lot of attention to the bike infrastructure specifically that's about to go on grand right there. Literally just north of that. So I had that concern about cars turning through that. Um, so that was my number one concern. I have to tell you all. Um, I my my position remains the same when it comes to medical marijuana. Had it not been for um David's client just saying that uh before I ever got involved, like, yeah, that's something that they wanted to to uh prohibit. I would have had that concern because that is, again, a substance um that it's a product that voters approved, okay? And the continuing criminalization, uh stigmatizing of this medical product is disappointing. Um, and so I would never, that wouldn't have been my preference, but the residents had that concern. And then the applicant just swooped right in and said, okay, nope, not an issue. The tattoo thing, that was new to me, but okay, um, I don't have one. I I still don't understand those concerns about tattoos.
And James, uh, let me, let me add one thing. To be entirely precise, it wasn't Kelly's client directly. It was the predecessor entitled to his client, to be precise about it.
Thank you for taking the time to be precise. I was wondering about that. So, yeah, the, anyway, all that to say, I, as the councilperson, sat down, heard what the residents had to say and addressed that by limiting the amount of stories, the uses and the North Grand as it relates to infrastructure. And I'm hearing about this covenant conversation, you know, in the last few days. And upon the guidance from our legal team, I, I, it seems that this, these are separate issues. So with that, I would move for approval.
And Kelly, if I could just say, I think you've argued your client's case as well as you possibly can. I think you can divine from these comments that I may just speaking for myself, I feel like our hands are a little tied in what we can consider in this, in this particular case, when we make judgments about land use. So. All right, we've got a motion on the table. Is there a second? Cast your votes. Councilman McAtee, have you voted? You want to just vote verbally, Larry?
No, I want, I want to review by, by our legal team of where they think we stand on this.
Oh, okay. Hold the vote. So you're asking, what's your question exactly, Larry? I mean, they can't tell you how to vote necessarily, but what do you, what is your specific question to Kenny?
Does, does the city have the legal right to vote on this, or should we abstain?
Well, you have, yes, you have the legal right to vote on the application for rezoning. If you're asking me, would we win a denial of, of this rezoning in district court? My answer is no. I do not believe we could win this if we denied it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are you comfortable voting now, Councilman?
Yes, thank you.
All right, passes unanimously. Okay, I have to step away for just a few minutes. And I am turning the gavel, the virtual gavel over to Vice Mayor Greenwell for item nine P and on for a few more. Vice Mayor Greenwell, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I will proceed and I'll ask for assistance from all members of the council. This is the first time I've handled a virtual meeting, so we'll see how it goes. All right, I believe we are now on item nine. Hugh, James, did you finish up both of your zoning requests?
Yes, we're on nine Q.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, that's a Ward five issue. It's a and let me just introduce it real quick. David Box is the attorney for the applicant. If you want to say anything, you're welcome to, but this is a application for S P U D in Ward five. It's the expansion of the cemetery to include cremation services, I believe, at Rest Haven. David, anything else that you would like to mention? I would like to say this, no protest. It was approved unanimously by the planning commission. And David, any other comments?
No, that's it. This is just a natural expansion of what the Rest Haven Cemetery offers families. So it's been there for quite some time, and this simply adds the use to allow for a crematorium on the, the site.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I am going to move for approval of this. And then we'll vote at this time. And it's approved unanimously. Next item, item nine R, Ward two. Councilman Cooper, we're back at you.
Yes, we are indeed. And is the applicant and/or their legal representation present? No, no. Has anyone signed up to speak? Doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, sorry. This is Preston Sullivan. My mouse got, my died on me. I reside at 2649 Northwest 14th Street. I'm counsel for Austin Hayes on this zoning application. You know, it, it was approved unanimously by the council, the planning commission. I apologize. This property's been vacant for some time. Looking to put in some retail in there. You know, I think there were some concerns on, you know, the paving of the sidewalks, and I think those have been addressed with Councilperson Cooper. And there were no protests at the planning commission. So I'm here for questions if the council has any.
Yes, thank you, Preston. And right, you know, right now it's looking more like a retail for dispensary is kind of what we're thinking, but that's more of an interim conversation. I think Austin has much grander ideas for this particular spot. And I'm very excited that he's thinking long term like that. I also, as I commended him in private, would like to commend him in public by saying the, the work, the work he and his folk did on this particular building is, again, commendable. And I just wanted to take time to say that in public. And, you know, Austin's already working with our historic Britton District, just a little bit up the road. So he's already thinking about that connecting thread there along Western to Britton. And again, I think that's, that's good. I know, as Preston said, we have already reached an agreement about the building of a sidewalk, and I want to applaud everybody who, who's working to achieve walkability there on Western, in particular, as it relates here. And with that, I would move for approval.
Thank you. There's a second? Thank you. Please vote. It's approved unanimously. Okay. Councilperson Nice, we're going to item number nine S.
Yes, thank you. This is ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval for S P U D 1287, 2600 Northeast 63rd Street from P U D 280 to this S P U D. And this is to request an permit and emergency response warehouse on the existing Oklahoma City County Health Department campus. And is there anyone that signed up to speak?
No, but the applicant's available.
If anyone has any questions for the applicant, please feel free. Otherwise, I will move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Now we will vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next, councilperson Todd Stone, would you, you got number nine T?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is regards to Spud 1288. Again, this is approved unanimously by the planning commission. It's for a small commercial development storage on South Sunny Lane. It is what is already a mixed use area. So unless anyone with council has any questions, I will move for approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. It's approved unanimously. I believe the next item, nine U, has been deferred. So we are on.
No, you, you hasn't been deferred. The third B has been deferred.
I'm sorry. Okay. Councilperson Hammond, please. Number nine U.
Yes, this is a ordinance that would allow a tap, a brewery and tap room right over there by Sixth and Broadway. So I will move for approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a second? Please vote. It's approved unanimously. Next, item nine W.
Yes, your councilman, this was, item was presented previously, and this is the public hearing on this item.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody signed up to speak on this item?
No, they have not.
Okay, do we, I'm sorry, but do we vote to move this on or just move on to the next item?
We just move to the next item. We don't vote on public hearing.
It's actually the final hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. We do vote this one.
Okay, thank you. Would someone please make a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. And it's approved unanimously. Next, item nine X.
So this is an item that is an introduction of an ordinance, and it relates to the alarm permit process and the false alarm calls. And so Steve Criss is here with Municipal Counselor's Office to give us an overview of what's recommended for changes in this ordinance.
Thank you.
Good morning. This ordinance was actually last adopted in 2019. So what we're voting on today are just some minor changes to that. Most of those changes have to do with just cleaning up some terminology, removing some outdated language and terms. It does simplify the appeal process somewhat, and it clarifies the revocation portion by increase, or not increasing, but allowing for fees to be assessed on the fourth and fifth false alarm. Previously, you could only assess a fee on the sixth, but now we're allowing fees for the fourth and fifth.
Hey, any questions from council? Any, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, they have not.
Okay, well, I will accept the motion then. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. And it's approved unanimously. All right, the next item is public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Has anyone signed up to vote on any of the items under nine Y?
No, they have not.
Okay, well, I'll accept a motion. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Is the vote on nine Y one or nine Y two?
I'm sorry, Councilperson Stone. It's on nine Y one, please.
It's, so the public hearing is the, where they will speak, and the nine Y two is the resolution.
Sorry about that. It's nine Y two for the vote. And it's approved unanimously. Okay. Nine Z is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Has anyone signed up to speak on item nine Z one, please?
No, Councilman, they haven't.
Okay, then I'll accept a motion to vote on declaring leases as unsecured under nine Z two. Moved and seconded. And it's passed. It passes unanimously. Next, nine double A is a public hearing regarding abandoned structures. Has anyone signed up to speak? Item number nine double A, abandoned structures.
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you. Then I will accept a motion on item nine double A two, resolution in the above items as abandoned. Moved and seconded. Please vote. It's approved unanimously. Yes, thank you. Okay. Next is item nine A B one, a public hearing regarding fiscal year 2021 budget amended amendment.
Thank you, Councilman. The, this is a budget amendment that we have for the 2021 fiscal year budget. Doug Dollar is Assistant Finance Director for us, manages the Budget Office, is going to present the, an overview of these changes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Doug Dollar in the Budget Office here. This amendment modifies eight funds for a total of just over $27 million. First change is to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund. Fund balance was higher than anticipated in the CIP fund, and we're projecting, or we're budgeting 5.7 million of that fund balance for several projects. A couple of note include $2 million for HVAC replacements at the Bricktown Ballpark and $300,000 for security enhancements at City Hall. The fire sales tax is being increased by $1 million for the remodel of Fire Station One. This is the latest project in the fire department as they work to modernize their facilities. Fund balance is a source of funding for this project, and the next item on the agenda provides the authority for this project in the fire sales tax fund. General fund is being increased by $6.8 million to provide budget authority for debris removal from the October ice storm from city parks, medians and arterial streets by contractors for the Parks and Recreation Department and the Public Works Department. The storm has been declared a federal disaster, and we do anticipate FEMA and State of Oklahoma reimbursements for 87 and a half percent of our costs. But we don't know how soon that will happen, so we budgeted fund balance to cover this expense until then. I would note that the cost of debris removal from residential areas is being handled by the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, and that is not part of this amendment. OC estimates that they will spend approximately $15 million for residential debris removal. The cost in OC will also be part of the expenses we'll submit to FEMA for state and federal reimbursement. The grant fund is being amended by about $10.5 million to account for three COVID-19 related grants, specifically $2.9 million in community development block grants, $1.6 million in the emergency solutions grants, and $5.9 million in the housing opportunities for people with AIDS program. And I realize that this does not include, this amendment does not include the $19.6 million in emergency rental assistance funding that was part of the last coronavirus relief bill. We had an item earlier on the agenda with the Community's Foundation of Oklahoma to begin implementation of that program. We will get that included in our next budget amendment. The next fund to be amended is the hotel motel tax. The next fund to be amended is the hotel motel tax fund. The first part of this amendment adds $1 million as hotel tax coming in higher than expected. We had projected a decline of about 40% in hotel tax. At this point in the year, the tax is down 34%, and while that's still a tremendous decline, it is better than we had projected. The bond indenture for improvements at the fairgrounds requires that a set percentage of hotel tax be transferred to the trustee bank each month, and then whatever is not needed for debt services returned to the city. So because of that, with hotel tax coming in higher than expected, we need additional budget authority to be able to transfer the full amount to the trustee bank in each of the remaining months. There's a second change in the hotel tax, and that's to increase the portion of hotel tax that supports event sponsorships. The Convention and Visitors Bureau manages this program. This is the 1/11th piece of the hotel tax. They've requested an addition of $525,000 to provide for additional event sponsorships this year, and this would be funded by fund balance in the 1/11th portion of the hotel tax. The Internal Service Fund is being increased by $750,000 for the Fleet Services Internal Service Fund for additional general fleet replacement. The Medical Services Program Fund is being amended by $300,000 to provide budget authority for a prior-year expenditure that was not included in our purchase order rollover amendment that was done earlier this year. And then the final fund being amended is the Zoo Sales Tax Fund by $500,000. Again, sales tax is coming in ahead of projections, and so we want to provide enough budget authority to be able to transfer the full amount of collections to the Oklahoma City Zoological Trust. So again, this is a change of about $27 million, brings the adopted city budget to $1,689,361,630. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions for Doug? Seeing none, I would accept a motion to adopt this resolution. It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. And it's approved unanimously.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Greenwell. Excellent work. I am, I am back.
Well, great. I'm gonna pass it back to you then, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. We're on item AC. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Great. All right, so AC one and two are related. AC one is a second public hearing regarding the amending of the June 16, 2020 City Council Resolution approving certain fire, other sales tax expenditures and/or projects for this fiscal year. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, Mayor.
They have not. So we will close it and move on to item AC two, which is a resolution amending the June 16, 2020 City Council Resolution approving certain fire, other sale expenditures, et cetera. What does the council wish to do with the resolution? We've got a motion and a second to adopt it. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to item AD. This is a resolution approving Oklahoma City MAPS Investment and Operating Trust Indenture and Accepting Beneficial Interest for the City of Oklahoma City in said trust and trust indenture and approving the appointment of the five initial trustees of the Oklahoma City MAPS Investing and Operating Trust. This is a very significant milestone in the implementation of MAPS four. You may recall that this council, and ultimately the voters of Oklahoma City, created a, I think, a pretty innovative and novel way to attempt to try to meet the operating needs of certain MAPS four projects by setting aside north of $100 million of the billion-dollar MAPS four initiative for what some might call, we don't call it here, but I use it just for comparison purposes, some might characterize as sort of an endowment. And those dollars are explicitly set aside in the resolution adopted by this council unanimously in August of 2019. And in that same resolution, there was some discussion of creating a trust to provide the financial oversight of those funds, much like you might think of our Oklahoma City Retired Employees Trust. You know, we, we're, this is not a foreign concept, having a body of residents and staff that oversee the financial management of some sort of financial corpus. So in the midst of this crazy year, as you well know, we have certainly worked to continue to implement MAPS four and keep it on track. And last summer, we created the Advisory Board, and they have been meeting for the last few months. And in this particular MAPS, as I just stated, we also provided for the creation of a second body, which will oversee this, these, these financial resources, and that is the trust indenture that is before you today. And it also includes the five original appointees. Two of them are city staffers, and then three of them are residents. I chose and present to you today for your consideration a slate that includes the two at-large members of the MAPS four Citizens Advisory Board, because I felt that overlap was good, and it was, it was collaborative and made sense to have that coordination between the Citizen Advisory Board and this trust, and then a third member who has financial management expertise and actually has served on a state pension board, which is very similar, or at least a state pension board investing, investment committee, which is, I think, a very similar arrangement to the one we're creating here today. I just wanted to give that a little bit of introduction. I know that Craig and staff have got an even deeper presentation, but I kind of wanted to set the, set the stage and give a little bit of context to what this is.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent Bryant, our Finance Director, is on today to give a presentation. Wiley Williams, Deputy Municipal Counselor, is also on and can answer questions on this. He actually drafted the indenture, and so I'll let Brent give the presentation. If you all have questions, he will be glad to answer those.
All right. Good morning, or good afternoon, counsel. Brent Bryant, Finance Director. As the mayor alluded to, item nine AD provides for the creation of the Oklahoma City MAPS Investment Operating Trust and appoints the five initial trustees. This is a result of the resolution of intent that council approved back in August of 27, 2019, and which laid out the framework for this trust. I've got a few slides for you this morning. This slide provides the various projects that are expected to be beneficiaries of the investment income over a minimum of 40 years. This, this totals $106.5 million. Does not include the $5 million that was designated, or the $4 million that was designated for an additional 1,000 new streetlights over the next 10 years. As we proceed with this trust, we'll continue to evaluate whether these funds should be included in the trust, maybe with the hopes of making that money go further. As I mentioned, the resolution of intent called for the creation of a public trust to manage the operating funds with the goal that the corpus of the investments would not be diminished, but only a portion of the earnings would be utilized on an annual basis. One key task that is very important to success of the new trust is the development of an investment policy, and we will rely on experts to help us with that task. Our initial thoughts are we can average 4% to 6% earnings annually, but market conditions will vary. For example, the city's $800 million retirement system, that the mayor alluded to just a minute ago, has averaged about 7.2% annual growth since inception, our investment income. However, we've had years where we've had much less. And, and just to give you some perspective, this last year through February or through January, we'd grown about 16%. And so when your average is 7.2 and the last year was 16, there are going to be some years where just the market goes down. And so we, one of our goals is develop a sustainable portfolio that is consistent and prudent that we can rely on over the years. The duties of the trust include a minimum of four meetings per year. We'll, we'll try, we'll meet quarterly to discuss investment performance and manage the distribution process. In addition, the trust will have the authority to enter into investments and operating agreements and have the ability to buy and sell investments. The trustees, as the mayor alluded to, the chairperson is Theresa Rose Crook. The other trustees are Brenda Hernandez, Kevin Moore, Kenton Sudal is the city manager designee, and myself as the Finance Director. On today's consent docket, you approved an RFP for us to begin the process to select the professional to help us establish very, various policies, including the spending policy, investment policy, along with the development of strategic asset allocation and portfolio structure. These proposals are due April 14 of 21, and we anticipate having our first trust meeting sometime in April, probably after we receive these proposals. So with that, I would like to, again, Craig talked about Wiley Williams, the yeoman's work on this, as did, I will tell, the City Treasurer, Matt Boggs, worked extensively on this. I just want to tell him I appreciate their efforts on this. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brent? Or Wiley?
I don't have questions for Brent, but I am curious why we only have five, why you chose five instead of maybe seven, maybe nine.
Yeah, yeah. Wiley kind of, I suppose, sort of first headed that direction. Wiley, does that have sort of historic precedent in comparison to other things? I honestly, I don't know. Why Wiley? Did you, did you go with five initially?
Well, we wanted to, finding qualified people to manage the fund is difficult. We wanted to keep the trust similar to what we keep with the others and rely on expertise as opposed to making it a broad trust with various citizen participants and things like that. It was sort of the direction I was given.
Yeah. So Wiley, I guess it's, it's worth noting in this context and maybe in others as well. This is, you know, this is very much about simple financial oversight. The, the, the questions of distribution were already settled in the resolution adopted by council. So there's not a lot of discretion. Is that a fair statement in terms of the, the activity that, that this board will be engaged in? In fact, I believe you provided for them to only meet at least once a quarter, which is, you know, typically reflective of a body that is providing really just the most general oversight as opposed to, you know, real hands-on management. Because in this case, you'll have staff and you'll have a consultant, as Brent was just referring to, who will really be handling the, the day-to-day of, of, you know, investing the proceeds. Is that a fair characterization of the responsibilities of the body?
Yes. And we felt that could, I felt it could be best handled with a reasonable number being five or six people, and the final direction I was given would stick with five.
Okay. Councilwoman Nice, there's no, you know, these are all, there's no magic number. I mean, I, I don't have, I don't have any personal preference on the number other than it's always, as he said, it gets harder and harder to find, you know, qualified available people the larger you get, but I don't, you know. There's no magic to it, to the number. It's kind of arbitrary in any case.
Well, I guess my concern is, as we get into these trusts and, and having these types of conversations continuously, we're still leaving people out of, out of the conversation, especially as we're dealing with MAPS four. And it is a very broad spectrum, if you will, of projects. So in, in, in that regard, it, it seems as if, in my, my opinion, that we could probably do a little better when it comes to the numbers of participants for this trust. And, and as we look at just this trust, in my opinion as well, we should look at other trusts to make them more inclusive for our actual city instead of certain folks that seem to be on all of the same things making the decisions for a lot of the voices that should be at the table.
Okay.
How often are we going to receive as council updates on where we are with these investments and the interest? And, you know, particularly as it relates to just ensuring that these different projects receive the operating dollars they're going to need to operate their respective projects successfully?
I would anticipate that as we have, as this consultant comes on, they'll provide us typically, that they have programs where they'll be able to provide us with performance the day after the, you know, a day or two after the end of a particular month. They'll tell you how we're doing fiscal year-to-date, how we're doing the last 12 months, how we're doing, how we did the last month on the various investments that we have made over, you know, over the, over the last year, so, or the last, over the certain period. I'm on the Oklahoma Public, our Oklahoma City Post Employment Trust, Benefits Trust. We meet on a quarterly basis, and we receive those reports on a, on a, we receive them on a quarterly basis, but I think in this case, we can get those on a monthly basis. And if we want to forward those to you, I'm sure we can do that.
So from the council's, that's, that would be from the trust perspective. From the council perspective, I would recommend we do something more like biannual or annual reports. It's kind of like watching your portfolio from a month-to-month. There's just a lot of changes in between on a month-to-month basis that I wouldn't recommend bringing reports to the council every single month. But we'll come back with a recommendation on that. I would say at least biannually or annually that we would come back with a report for the council.
I, I bet there's a magic number between biannually and monthly, and that's what I would be interested in. I, I mentioned this because the, the operations question has long plagued us, right? When it comes, well, just to operations generally, just nothing of MAPS. And I think because this is such a new endeavor, and there, while MAPS passed overwhelmingly, we recognize that. We, we celebrate and champion that. There, there was definitely at least a little bit in the back of our minds, some of us who were, you know, worried about that operations side of things. And so again, since this is a new endeavor for us with MAPS, I do think there needs to be a more regular, and I understand fluctuations in the market, you know, but I, I think a more regular approach is probably going to be good. Again, you know, a boil, water doesn't boil just by staring at it. I get that. So I understand that, that concern, but I do think for the sake of transparency, that would be important. And then to Councilwoman Nice's point, yeah, I do, I, I would, I would challenge us to, I mean, you don't want too many cooks in the kitchen, but I do think that in terms of just representation of different perspectives is probably something to kind of think about. Because yeah, you know, and I've talked to community organizers about this too, and someone's like, hey, we need someone to serve on a board, and we're like, well, it's the same people over and over again, you know. But I, I do think that we need to think about, about representation a little bit as, as this, as, as this gets underway. I, I think that there might still be some opportunities there, is what I would say. Thanks.
Brent and Craig, or Craig, when do you think? I know it's, it's important to get, you know, the implementation plan, and then that kind of tells you when you're going to start actually moving money over to the trust. It's, you know, it's, it's important for everybody to probably know, who might be listening to this, that this trust won't be in a position to make distributions for some time because they want to get the investments made and build up, you know, a safety net there. When do you think is a realistic time that we might actually be, be paying attention to the point where we can see actual checks being cut? I mean, I, I know it's, I was, I'm guessing the number is years, not months. So tell me what, what you think that number is.
Yeah, I, I would think that we would be at least two years in from a fund being fully invested because we've got to make sure that we got sufficient revenue in the fund to be able to withstand the market changes through the years that would allow us to be able to ensure that, you know, once we get to a level that we can start distributing funds for operations, that we can do it in a way that it wouldn't limit, get us in a position where potentially in some years, we would have to cut back or wouldn't be able to provide a distribution. So if we're just going with all the interest that we earn right up front as soon as we start earning it, it's going to limit our ability to ensure a more constant flow of revenue in the future. So I would expect that, and, and that's one of the things the trust will do, working with the investment advisor that we're going to hire, is look at both the investment plan and policy, but also look at a recommended distribution plan that would help us to model, model that off, off of what endowments will often do to make sure that we're handling that prudently. I think that I would expect it would be at least a couple of years before we're actually in a position to start distributing funds.
Any other questions for Craig, Wiley, Brent? Okay. What does the council wish to do with the resolution?
Is it possible to, this is to establish? Is it possible to, this is to establish, okay, is it possible to amend now to add more members? Because it says in the presentation, we have five initial trustees. So it sounds to me like we need to amend that now to ensure that takes place.
Right, now, it really couldn't be changed later. Wiley, to even consider that, I know this is a lengthy legal document. What would, what would you feel like you would need from council to consider something like that?
Just, we need to know who they are so that we can name them.
Then it sounds like we probably need to defer two weeks.
I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to deferral. Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, the one thing I would say a little differently is, I would assume the trust will have some form of bylaws that allows it to be amended at a future date to either increase or decrease the number of trustees. I mean, that's quite common in most bylaws.
I have provided a process for that in the trust indenture itself. By making the city manager position the trust store, he can initiate any changes to the public trust.
So that would be, because you are correcting something I said a minute ago that might have been mistaken. So you're saying Wiley, that the trust could enlarge its membership as it deemed necessary without council consideration?
Well, the council would ultimately have to approve it. But the trust store is the person or the entity that makes the changes to a public trust. We've got caught in situations where it was difficult to amend the trust because the trust store no longer existed. And because they would name a particular person and that person expired and was no longer available. So I specifically made the opportunity for the city manager position to be the trust store so that he can make amendments to it or recommend them. And then the beneficiary would need to approve those.
Ultimately, then Wiley would come back, it would come back as a recommendation from the trust. It would go to the trust, the trust would make the recommendation to the council, and the council would ultimately have to approve it.
Are we, my question, are we positive that that is the process? Because I'm thinking about some of our other trusts where the vote in, in the business is already handled. We just have to receive it as far as we can't amend or say no, or let's look at that again.
Wiley just said it's in the trust document.
So Wiley, you want to question, clarify, Councilwoman Nice's question?
Well, not going to hide anything. I mean, it's, a public trust is a separate political body under the laws of Oklahoma. And if it makes a decision, that is a binding decision. And that is why we bring items to you for concurrence for the public trust is because you can't, if you merge the two, then there is no public trust and you lose all the benefits of a public trust if the council wants to control everything the trust does. So when the trust makes an agreement, it's binding on the trust.
But Wiley, what I'm asking about is, the Councilwoman Nice's question before was, in this change of the indenture, to change the indenture to add members, the city as the sole beneficiary of the trust, the council as the sole beneficiary of the trust would have to approve that.
Right. And the city manager position can make that recommendation to amend the trust.
And thank you for that because Mr. Wiley actually answered the question that I had, which was, to the point, we should vote and amend now. So therefore, there will be no questions asked later when we ask you to reconsider or look at again.
And that is what I'm trying to clarify, is that what Wiley was saying is that actions of the trust are separate. But changes to the trust and the indenture are required to go back to the city council for approval. Is that correct, Wiley?
You're kind of talking about two different things. Nikki's talking about amending it now to add seven or nine trustees. And, but if you adopted it now with five, it could always be changed later, but there is a legal process to change it. You would amend the trust and then it has to be accepted by the beneficiary and also, I think, approved by the trustees.
And I think that once you, I mean, that's, that's, that's a fairly convoluted process. And it would require us, I mean, it's going to require us to hear from that trust. That trust is going to have to agree with mine and Councilwoman Nice's assessment of the situation, right? So you're counting on that, and then that would come back to council. Whereas it just seems easier right now to amend this. But it sounded like we had to have a name in mind right now. Is there literally no way, kind of going back to Wiley's conversation about the, the city managers designate? You can't just say you get two, you know?
I think we would really have to defer it, James, and I'm fine with that. I just, yeah, I mean, I think we would defer two weeks, let Wiley draft it properly. It's going to be, you know, it's going to add several paragraphs. And it would probably be the addition of two members who, like the current non-citizen advisory board member, have, you know, professional experience, work in the field of financial management.
Mayor, I think the first thing we have to do is, the council has to decide if they want to increase the number from five to seven.
Yeah.
That needs to be accounted for.
Yeah, no, I agree. Maybe that, maybe that would be baked into the deferral vote, Mark, probably, to be honest with you. I mean, it would be.
I would, I would make a motion to defer this, to send it back to the drafters, to propose back to us a seven trustees.
So I've got one question for Kenny or Wiley. If we're going to come back and change the document, is a deferral the appropriate action? Or should it be that we strike it and then bring it back?
I think we still need to know what the council wants as far as numbers are concerned.
Right. The deferral is fine.
Okay.
I'll just add a few paragraphs and add two more trustees.
Okay.
Thank you, Wiley.
I've got a motion to defer it and to add two trustees to make a total of seven trustees. That's the motion that's on the table.
And I would, I would second that, unless Nikki, Councilwoman Nice.
Yeah, I think the operative part of that motion is the deferral, but I think it would certainly be understood by all of us involved that the reason for the deferral is to spend the next two weeks adding two trustees to bring it to seven. And so, and so that's certainly what we would all work towards. And I guess in a sense, Mark, you know, rather than poll everybody one by one, I think in a sense, your vote on the deferral is sort of your articulation of whether you think that's something we should, we should work on for the next two weeks.
I mean, my, my motion's on the table. I don't have a second yet.
Yeah, you do. I think Cooper, Cooper is your second.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any other, any other comments on this? So this is to defer with the understood premise that we're going to spend a couple of weeks adding two more trustees with financial experience that will bring it to seven total trustees. Okay, cast your votes. Has Councilwoman Hammond there? Have you voted yet?
I'm not getting the screen to vote.
Okay. Well, how do you wish to vote? We could take this one verbally if you like.
I will vote yes.
Okay. All right, passes unanimously. So we'll bring, we'll see this back on, on March 16th. And thank you, everybody, for your, for your input. I think that's entirely appropriate, although I say that as the guy who has to go find the two trustees now. And that took me three months to find the slate we currently have. But I'm going to speed it up and get it done by March 16th. Okay. All right, now we are on item AE. And this was already discussed under, under when we were convening as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. So I don't know if there's anything else to say. We just want to go ahead and take it up. If you want to make a motion or feel free. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Councilwoman Hammond, are you back?
This one came up, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Has everyone voted? All right, standing. It's closed out for me yet.
Staff, Councilman Greenwell has left, so you can press the vote.
Passes unanimously. Okay, nine AF1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Thomas Austin. I don't believe we need executive session. Take a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item nine AG1 is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Corporal Ryan Williams while he continues to require rehabilitation. I don't believe we need executive session, so we could take a motion on this. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Nine AH1 is a resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Poe, Martin, and NM versus City of OKC. Municipal Counselor's Office is not requesting an executive session on this. That is up to the council, but if someone wishes to make a motion, staff is fine with that. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Brings us to 10A. 10A1 is a claim recommended for approval. Don't believe we need executive session. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items from council. We already had handled item 11A previously in the meeting. So we'll just go around the virtual horseshoe. And we'll start with, I suppose, Councilman Griner is still not with us, so we'll start with Ward 2.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to OKC County Health and our Ward 2's historic Asian district for co-hosting a recent virtual town hall regarding the vaccination process, both, you know, how it went through trials and how to get one and why it's important. I just really appreciated them hosting that in the various languages that they did. Very helpful. I wanted to thank State Superintendent Joy Hoffmeister for continuing to hold ongoing conversations with stakeholders about equity in our schools. I've attended those alongside council staff, Debbie Martin, and we found them very informative. And we appreciate the superintendent's request for our perspectives. And it's been very, very, very useful work. I also wanted to thank Jared Shadid and their staff for the work they have been doing with the mayor's homelessness task force. And I'm very much looking forward to those recommendations heading our way for what the next 10 years of our comprehensive plan will look like. And I wanted to also thank Kristen Turkelson for their work with Embark and the stakeholder meetings we're having regarding Ward 2's upcoming Northwest OKC BRT, Bus Rapid Transit. So very, very excited to continue being part of those conversations. And also to the Peak, 36th of May, for inviting me to tour their dispensary there in Ward 2. One of the main reasons I wanted to make a note about it, though, was seeing the art that Denise Duong has done, both on the interior and exterior, to help bring to life what was once upon a time, an abandoned gas station. So just wanted to say thanks to that. And then to conclude, to say thank you to Randy Marks and Robbie Kinsel for inviting me to participate in conversations about what public art will look like outside of our Belle Isle Library in the coming weeks and months ahead as that gets underway. So I just wanted to thank, thank them for including me in that. And, you know, this, this month, as we honor women, I just wanted to, as I've said previously, say it remains an honor to serve with our city's 10th and 11th women to ever serve on city council. Just remember, we are serving in that particular moment in history. And it's, it's, it's been, it's been quite an education working with each of them. I would also point out, we have districts in Ward 2 where women are in leadership. We have small businesses in Ward 2 where women are those small business owners. And we know that this pandemic has disproportionately affected women in ways that are quite stunning. And so I will continue to say how happy I am that we at the city level have invested in our small business community. I'm glad that we've been the stewards that we have with federal dollars to ensure that our small business community survives. I also wanted to thank Mayor Holt, who I think, what was I listening to yesterday? Oh, I was listening to a political podcast and they mentioned that you had led one of the letters that's going out to our federal representation in regards for the need for municipal and state COVID revenue relief, like relief for our lost revenue. And they name dropped you and our city. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And of course, I'm sending out my own letter just from last year's that council passed for the three that called for those funds. Those are my main things. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. And two things I want to follow up on you, reference Denise Duong. Of course, she joined our city's arts commission earlier this morning. And also, just by way of update, if I haven't had a chance to tell anyone here, you know, we're slated for $116 million. I mean, that's what they're currently estimating, you know. We'll, we'll know for sure when it, when it passes and everything, and we really hope it will. But we're slated for $116 million in direct support from the federal government to the City of Oklahoma City. And as currently proposed, can be used for revenue shortfalls. So we would have every opportunity to essentially erase the, you know, the cuts that we had to make to our budget due to the, due to the recession last, last May and June. And also, there's no, it's currently proposed to be no expiration date. So we could, you know, shepherd those resources potentially to shore up our budget for multiple fiscal years. So thank you for mentioning that, and that has obviously been an exciting opportunity for Oklahoma City to possibly have that support.
No, I can't thank you enough for that. In fact, I'm going to make my way downtown here in a little bit. So when I do, I'll work with council staff to make sure we can fax over that letter today because I believe the US Senate is supposed to take up that debate tomorrow. And thank you for that number. I hadn't heard that number yet. It really means a lot to me that you advocated for that. And it really means a lot to me, the council members who joined us last, last, last May. Some, you know, we set something in motion a while ago. And now finally, we'll be able to have a bill that gets us that. And I just really appreciate your advocacy on that and everybody who stepped up there. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, word four. I'm sorry, word three. Councilman McAteer.
Nothing today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Word four.
Good, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Word five, I believe, has departed. So word six.
Thank you. I was curious to ask Craig. I got some questions on Friday about a presentation by the Oklahoma City Police Department that looks like was released on Friday afternoon. And in their press release that they sent out, it said that the presentation had been. And in their press release that they sent out, it said that the presentation had been presented to city leaders. And I was curious who that entailed, because I got questions about, because I know the council is not the only group of people considered city leaders, but many people started reaching out to me, asking my opinion and my thoughts. And I'd not even known that this was a thing that had happened. So I was just curious who this presentation was made to and when.
Right, I did receive the presentation. We've been working through a few issues on that. I didn't realize it was going to go out on Friday. My intent would be for the council to receive that. And so we'll work back with, with the council and make sure that you all have that information and have the chance to have that briefing.
Appreciate that. And I think from my own, I mean, I watched the YouTube video. It doesn't appear to have any sound of like an actual presentation. It just sort of seems to scroll through the slides and then plays, you know, the audio from the 911 calls and the, any video that's played. And I just want, you know, I want to express that I'm really frustrated by the framing of, throughout the presentation of, of the events that occurred on the 30th and 31st, particularly the beginning of, you know, people blocking the intersection at 23rd and Claussen. You know, in the presentation, I think it says, you know, around 7:30, the group began to block the intersection, and officers responded and tried to de-escalate before taking any sort of enforcement action. And I went and watched the video. And in this one video that I believe I sent to you, Craig, back in probably, I guess that was early to mid-June of, of, you know, that, from one angle. And then I looked at some video that the, that was in the presentation, as well as some, some video that the journal, some journalists had published. And in this, in this one video from a journalist, a police car arrives at about, in the video, about two minutes and 11 seconds into the video. And there are hands-on people within 30 seconds of, of the, of that arrival. And so I think, to me, it's a little disingenuous to say that there were real efforts to de-escalate before taking any kind of enforcement action. And, and I, I guess what, one of my main concerns, especially as we're having these discussions with the law enforcement task force and working group, specifically because the task force is, is meant to address something like de-escalation, is that, you know, I think the first step in admitting or, or changing anything is admitting that there were mistakes made and that, that maybe our policies or the way that they're practiced are not, not the best. And in this presentation, I saw no admittance of recognizing any fault on the side of the police department. And, and I'm not saying that there weren't things that I wouldn't, I would have not liked to see from the side of people who were involved in the events of that night. Like, I don't like windows being broken. I don't like things being set on fire. But especially that first interaction, the fact that there was, as far as I can tell from this presentation, really no in, analysis or introspection on what could we have done differently in that instance that might have set the tone for that evening that could potentially have changed that whole night and next days. And that really concerns me, because I think, again, as we're talking about these policy changes and, and talking about how we think about public safety in our city is, if you don't have a group of people who are willing to admit where things need to be changed, you can't, that's, it's a non-starter. And so, again, I just really concerned by that. And I, and I've heard from many people, again, those people reaching out to me, saying they were very frustrated by the one-sidedness of this presentation. And again, no, no analysis of what could the police department have done differently in that moment and, and throughout the night that, that could have changed things. And so, yeah, I just, you know, I just wanted to say that to, to one, understand where this presentation was coming from, but also to just state that, again, it's, I, I fear that with this task force and working group that because we're not even starting at a shared understanding of what needs to change, as evidenced by, in my opinion, this presentation, that there is still a, some sort of influential culture that says that we did everything right. There's nothing that we needed to change about our response. I am trying to voice to you all that there are many people in our community that see that, see that type of presentation and feel like, okay, yep, like, we're not going to go anywhere. We're not going to progress in, in public safety, in effective public safety solutions, as well as in, when law enforcement does need to be involved in something, real, real trust between the community, especially, I would say, the community that showed up that night at 23rd and Claussen, expressing frustration and concern about police brutality in our country. Like, it's, it's just a non-starter. So that's all I have today.
May I? Thank you for raising that report. I haven't got to watch it. I forgot about it, Councilwoman. Craig, could you explain again why that report exists? That's my first question.
That was a report that was prepared, looking at, you know, an internal evaluation that was done by the police department to look at the events and to follow back through, to try to lay out a chronology of what had happened in those events. It's got body cam video. It's got different things in there. And I think they're in there as attachments. I'll have to go back and look at that to make sure. But it was prepared to provide a presentation to me as far as like what had happened in those events, the, the leadership in the, in the city organization, as to what had happened in those events, what actions were taken. It was really laying out the chronology of the events from the police department. And then we'd had requests for providing a report or any kind of summary of the events, to have that available to the media. That was provided again. It was going through a review process and was provided. I didn't realize it was going to go out at the time that it did. And so that was misstep on our part before we could get that out and let the council see that.
So thanks for that backstory. And I haven't spoken to Councilwoman Hammond about what she just said. I, I find it deeply troubling. I, I find it deeply troubling that we would put out a report, again, while this work is going on, while there is a narrative that exists across the country that says that the protests across the country were majority, my words, riots. It, and, and again, I'll just quote from the Armed Conflict Location and Event Data Project, which is an organization that has tro, long tracked political violence and unrest in regions around the world. And they worked together with Princeton University Bridging Divides Initiative. And they found, quote, "The vast majority of the thousands of Black Lives Matters protests this, last summer had been peaceful, with more than 93% involving no serious harm to people or damage to property." And in that same report, it says, "But the US government has taken a, quote, 'heavy-handed approach to the demonstrations, with authorities using force,' quote, 'more often than not when they are present,' the report found." And then there has been, and this is again, just quoting here from The Guardian, "And then there has been a troubling trend of violence and armed intimidation by individual actors, including dozens of car-ramming attacks targeting demonstrators across the country." And, and so I guess what I'm saying is, I, I worry about this report that is now out in the public, because at the state legislature right now, there is literally legislation that is trying to exempt people in cars if they feel they are in a, quote, riot situation. Again, if 93% of those protests were peaceful. But if you have a narrative out there that's telling people that that number just didn't exist, that most of these were violent, and that the people participating in them were violent, and that any public officials who are supporting those peaceful protests are equally violent and radical, that's a problem. That coheres a narrative. And I just heard you say that that report went to the media?
Yeah.
That, that means that that report has the ability to shape the public perception of reality, especially for people who weren't there. That is really worrying, y'all. That is deeply worrying. And nowhere in that report, I never, I never got a call. I don't know that any of the other council members got a call to ask us our perspective on what we saw. And I didn't hear anybody ask me my perspective from being out there in the streets. I didn't ask, I didn't hear anybody ask me what it was like to be called a terrorist, because I had a backpack on my back and I had a bike while I was out there. That is what our local news media, that gentleman in that helicopter did. I just think this is deeply problematic. And I also think it's problematic that that presentation did not come to council first. I never saw it. I just, it, it, it should have been, that we, we missed an opportunity here to kind of do like a frontline documentary type thing, where we actually interviewed people across the perspect, the, the, the perspectives, whether they believe everything was a riot and everything's Antifa and communist, or the people who knew better. I mean, we really missed an opportunity here, and this has real consequence on, on shaping public opinion. I've watched some of the council debates from Ward one and Ward three, and it's like I'm living in an alternative universe when I watch those things. I, how can we fix this? I'm glad Councilwoman Hammond mentioned it, because I'd actually forgot about it. So I haven't had the chance to watch it yet. And do you understand why I'm frustrated, like this? Okay.
Sure, yeah. And the intent really was to try to lay out the events that had happened in those two nights. I mean, didn't try to assess all of the protests. It wasn't trying to reflect upon all of the protests that had happened. That wasn't the intent. But it's definitely something we'll come back with and meet with the council.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hammond, or have you completed your report?
Yes.
Okay, word seven.
Thank you. I think I'm more disturbed at the fact that our city manager allowed that to get past him. And, you know, I, I don't even know what to say about that, because normally, anything else, you know, we can't have an opinion as far as regarding to employee-staff, but you do. So that's, that's very disappointing that we're having to ask why we haven't seen or had this conversation. But to the point of Councilwoman Hammond and Councilperson Cooper, just keep in mind, the timing of this is for us to keep at the forefront what happened last summer and not what happened in January. Not what happened in January. That was 10 times worse than what we saw, which is ridiculous, if we're going to have a full conversation about what took place. And the fact, again, here we are, trying to have a law enforcement task force to have these types of conversations in unison of how we can all work together to figure these things out in reference to our city and create better solutions pertaining to social and criminal reform and the social unrest and racial unrest that's happening in our country right now. And our city is not exempt from any of that. Our city is not exempt from any of that. Just look at our city structure as it stands. We still have a lot of work to do. So, which is why I raised the question to our chamber, which I still don't have an answer for, by the way. Went to the website, and all it has is a list of names. So I have to go through the work in Google, who the employees are, to actually see what the demographics are. So I'll probably never get that information that I need to ensure that if we're saying we're going to be confident and intentional about having conversations and doing the work, it needs to come from in-house. It's hard for us to say, we want you as a public to do these things, when we, as the entity, are not doing those things ourselves. And I think that's why we get so frustrated with having these continuous conversations about where we are, why we're here, how do we get here, how do we move forward, and what's next for not only the, the equity piece, but just the, the inclusion aspect of everyone to feel as if they matter. And right now, as council members, some of us feel we don't matter when it comes to these types of decisions or even having a conversation, because we are seen as contentious, because we are representing the people that have experienced all of these things that we're trying to help navigate our city through. And it's not really that difficult for us to bring people to the table. It's not difficult for us to find a couple of extra folks to be on a trust. It's not difficult for us to continue to have conversations in retrospect, even when it comes to making sure that our police department has the force, when they have these academies, having enough people that reflect the community, that can be a part of the next academy to help us with these solutions. It's not that difficult to do. However, I'm looking at a picture of the current class or the new class. I'm very concerned. Very concerned about that. So those are, those, I'll leave that there. I do want to say, I have a couple of other things. And, and thank you to Councilperson Cooper for acknowledging International Women's History Month. And for those who may not know, April is actually International Black Women's History Month. So we'll be, we'll be talking about women for two months. I love it, too. So I am asking our mayor for our next council meeting, since it is March in the, in the month of women, that, for our prayer, that we consider looking for a woman to lead us in, in that prayer before we begin our meeting. I do want to acknowledge Patience Ladding, who was the first female mayor that we've ever had for our city, and whose shoulders, obviously, as women, we stand upon in this work. And as we continue to acknowledge women from Black History Month, and there was a wonderful story done by Channel Five in honor of a council, previous councilwoman, Willa Johnson, for Black History Month. And I, I would ask that those who may not have seen it, you go to the website, and please watch it, just to see the wonderful efforts that this woman has made for our city and the things that she had to go through to get things done for our city as well. Um, also want to thank USA Baseball and our Oklahoma City Dodgers. We had the Play Ball Initiative that took place at the Grady News Island Baptist Church this past Saturday. Although it was a dreary Saturday, we were able to get out some bats and balls and hats and, and also free MLB for people to watch it online to our community. And we hope to do it again. It was supposed to be done for the month of February, but we hope to maybe have another one again in the future, so we can have more of our community to be present and to come and see more about baseball and softball and how to be engaged. I do have a question pertaining to, as, as this took place, we had water issue from a reported water issue, like leak. I, I wouldn't even say it was a leak, but it was water everywhere in the Northeast quadrant in this community, or had reported it on a Sunday or Monday. And it wasn't until that Saturday that we actually got relief for somebody to come out and move it up from a category two to a category one. So I guess my question is, who's going to be responsible for all of that water that was in the street? Is that going to be on the taxpayer to pay, to pay that payment? Or how are we going to make sure that that's not a responsibility of, of the community when they have called it in and asked for some relief for over five days? I mean, I know we have continuous concerns with the water and what occurred during Snowpocalypse, as it's called, but, you know, these are, these are dire concerns that our community has when it comes to who's really going to have to end up paying these costs for what takes place and what happens. So we can talk about this later, but I did want to make sure I brought that to the forefront as far as, as what to do and how we move about ensuring our community that if you report something, that you are not going to get a $1,200 bill next month pertaining to, to your water, because it's been running for a week or more, when in fact, it shouldn't, you shouldn't be charged for that. I do want to also thank- Um, I do want to also thank Oklahoma City County Health Department. We had a, a wonderful Douglas vaccine pod last week. And we are thankful for our, our pastors in the community who stepped up to volunteer and to be a part of that effort. It went very smoothly. And there were quite a few people that were able to get, uh, their first vaccination and a lot of folks who came to get that second one. And I know there are efforts to continue that, to continue vaccinations at Douglas High School. So we are looking forward to more people being able to, uh, receive either that first or that second dose of, of the vaccine. And lastly, oh, a couple more things. I know I talked about a couple, it's been a couple meetings. I've been talking about this whole, uh, the memorandum of understanding and I continue to get more information as council meetings go by, uh, pertaining to the money that we, we signed over to Tulsa to receive. And, and I, I would like for us to, to rescind and bring that back to our city. Um, in the efforts to ensure that it is going to be in-house and for the communities that it is supposed to represent and not who people choose for it to go through from, that aren't part of our city, but having conversations and relationships with other people. It needs to come here and it needs to be, uh, taking, taken advantage of by our city and our community and maybe creating, uh, a group or a trust or whatever the case may be in order for us to make sure that money gets distributed in the correct manner, uh, for our community. And I, I, last but not least, I want to address what happened at the last council meeting. What happened at the last council meeting when it comes to our implicit, explicit and unconscious bias. Uh, unfortunately, that conversation went viral, but fortunately it did. It went viral. And I don't know what's more disturbing to me, the fact that we were in the middle of a council meeting and we're waiting on a response from a council member or that our mayor just abruptly left the meeting and we still didn't get a response as to what was going on. And the fact that the next day, when there was a response, the council member who had been affected still did not receive any type of conversation or in general, just overall response from said mayor. I received a phone call from Councilperson Greenwell, which I appreciate him for reaching out to me. And we talked about it. I'm still, still oblivious and curious as to why there was not that type of conversation in this manner. When in fact, again, the statement in response was to say, "We want to condemn those things and we want to be inclusive." But the person who represents the people that were affected wasn't even taken into account as far as a conversation or response. So I, I'm not, I'm concerned about that as well as we continue to work through all of these challenges and just, we want to have a cohesive council, but it's difficult to do that when we're not getting that from leadership in order for us to be together to have that same cohesiveness. So I, I want to leave that with you all. And thank you finally for, uh, releasing the Benny Edwards video that we've been asking for, for over two months.
Okay. Thank you. Word eight?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, this weekend, uh, we lost, and I'll use Steve Lackmire's words, one of the pioneering downtown Oklahoma City developers and civic leaders when we lost Mark Ruffin. If, if you didn't know Mark, uh, I'd encourage you to read Lackmire's article that he wrote this morning. Um, he, uh, I'm getting some background noise. Um, he, uh, Mark, um, how would I put this? And James, this is a good way to put it. Uh, you talk about people that dream about starting a, a new business, whether it be a bakery, a bookstore or an appliance store. Uh, Mark was an incredible dreamer, an incredible visionary, but he acted upon those dreams and oftentimes under difficult circumstances. In the, the mid-1990s, um, he was the, one of the first people that came down and downtown Oklahoma City and started renovating, um, buildings on a dream. And some of the early things he did like, uh, loft apartments downtown when nobody was building housing downtown, Mark was the first to be there. Uh, I had the privilege of working with Mark when the city was looking at, um, impact fees, uh, placing that upon developments and developers. And, um, Mark's integrity, his honesty, his leadership, uh, was incredible and I learned a lot from him. Um, the one thing though, I, I do think that it's important that I point out that he was an incredible person when it came to supporting local causes. Um, and, and I can't name them all, but two that come to mind are, um, he worked with the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City, um, to do the project for the, the Catholic charities. And most recently, the, uh, Stanley Wath Rother Shrine. And so, um, uh, my thoughts and prayers go out to Manda, his wife, uh, and his four kids. And I hope you will read, um, uh, the article that Steve Lackmire wrote because, uh, Mark was, um, in many ways, a quiet person who didn't brag about what he, what he was doing. He just got it done. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mark. And I certainly echo those sentiments about Mark Ruffin. Um, okay, that concludes items from council. We are now at city manager reports, item, item 12.
Yes, sir. We don't have any presentations today, but we do have the, uh, sales tax report is on. And we did have a decline in sales tax for February. And again, February is going to be the last part of December, the first part of January, typically where we see our, our Christmas sales, um, are the strongest part of our Christmas sales. We had a decline of 4.6% in the sales tax. Still at about negative four point, uh, down 4.1% for the year. Um, overall, we're, we're still above, we're still above projections by 7.6 million on sales tax. Um, on use tax, another strong month. Um, and we actually are, um, currently we are, uh, on say, on use tax about 12.6% above, um, last year. And we're, uh, currently $6 million above target on use tax. So still doing well with sales and use tax. We'll keep monitoring that and make sure that we, uh, continue to update the council. The other report that is in is on the council priorities with the measures that we have on the transportation system that works for all residents. And so that report is in for the council. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to get back with you on those, um, to provide additional information. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Um, we have item 13 citizens to be heard. We have one who has signed up to speak. Matt Tibbetts. Is he still on the line? Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, just getting unmuted here.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes. And, uh, the city clerk will give you a, a warning at, when you've got 30 seconds left.
You bet. Thank you. Uh, my name is Matt Tibbetts. I live at 19204 Windy Way Road. Uh, good, good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. I know that's been a long council meeting and I appreciate you, uh, listening and hearing me. I'm, I'm in word four or word eight, rather. Uh, first, I just simply want to recognize this extraordinary time you are leading in. I know it's hard and you're doing the best you can. And I just want to say thank you for that. Today I come before you to please refrain from extending the mask mandate on the next hearing. By doing so, you will restore liberty to Oklahomans and uphold your oath to the Constitution of Oklahoma and the Constitution of the United States. The first line of our Oklahoma Constitution reads, "Invoking the guidance of Almighty God in order to secure and perpetuate the blessing of liberty." We're all familiar with a similar line in the Declaration of Independence that says that "we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed." "We, the governed, do not consent. We do not consent to be mandated to wear masks. Personal health is a personal issue. It is not the government's place to mandate me to take my vitamins or exercise. Message? Sure. Inform? Absolutely. Mandate? That's too far. And let us consider the negative impacts a sweeping mandate like this one causes. We've lost just one Oklahoman under the age of 17 due to COVID. Meanwhile, suicidal thoughts in this age group is skyrocketing. Just four weeks ago, Channel Six reported that every bed in Parkside Psychiatric Hospital is full. A demographic that is not susceptible to COVID is dying from mental health." I heard a mom testify in Edmond. She had to put her two 10-year-olds in counseling due to depression, 10 years old, due to depression. Another mom shared that her daughter said, "Mom, you don't know what it's like going to school all day and not seeing a face. It's hard." The CDC is now recommending double masking because single masking has not been efficient. You ever fogged your glasses while wearing a mask? That's because air is escaping all around it. You ever heard somebody say, "I did everything right and still got COVID?" That's because masks don't work. We touch them constantly after touching surfaces and they're contaminated. The mask is causing negative consequences while wearing a mask that isn't even working. I hope that we can agree that it is. Thank you. I hope that we can agree that it is not Big Brother's role to mandate masks for everyone. They're causing harm for those who don't need them. Those who would like to wear them should be free to wear them. They can wear as many as they'd like. They can double or triple mask and they should be safe as ever. And those who see the negative effects of mask wearing should not be forced to. I believe in Oklahomans to take care of themselves. I believe in Oklahomans to take care of each other. I believe in liberty.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tibbetts. And, uh, that concludes all the items on our agenda. And it also concludes those who had signed up to speak. And so we are now at item 14, adjournment, and we are adjourned. Thanks, thanks to everyone for all your.